Thirty-six on Monday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, and we're gonna call this school committee meeting to order. We're gonna start with our minutes. Uh, we're gonna skip May first minutes. Um, unfortunately, there was a network outage and they're not complete. Um, we'll start with May twelfth. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes from May twelfth? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Actually, I did not check exactly who was here, who was not at those meetings, but I think everybody was here, right?
Yeah.
Cool. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussions or changes to the minutes? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to minutes from May nineteenth.
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth, thank you. Um, did anybody get a chance to look over those? Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, uh, discussion, questions, or changes? Hi, Mike?
Nope, I didn't hear that.
Okay, here and none. All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving to minutes from June twenty-eighth. Um, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I wasn't here, so.
Okay.
I'll make that one.
Right, now that, well, Mike wasn't here either. Uh, alright, so let's table this one. It looks like Mike wasn't here, Maria wasn't here. Alright, so we'll table it so that I don't have to second it. Even though you guys can vote in favor, I should not have to, uh, second it. Okay, um, then moving on to visitors' comments. Are there any visitors for comments? If you could introduce yourself before your comments, that would be appreciated.
Karen Laramie, I'm on East Street in Denny. Um, so my main reason was, I was looking at the stand-up from our June meeting, our town meeting, special town meeting.
Yep.
Um, and I know we didn't get the override money, we were taking June's stabilization fund, I don't know if you, this is gonna be part of the discussion today about stuff?
Yes.
Okay. One of the, well, the main one was, I was wondering, I don't know if you can answer it now, but if, if not, I'll wait till later, but the, um, the seventh grade teachers, teaching eighth grade also, was wondering if that was still, that was one of the class impacts or implications that got drawn here. Middle school impact was the first line, where it says requires, um, middle school teachers to teach both seventh and eighth grades in content. So I, that was, I was wondering if that is happening, or it's gonna stay the same, or?
Uh, the only content area that that is going to happen in is math, um, and that was going to happen regardless of the override vote, so.
Okay, okay. So all this other stuff's gonna be discussed, like what the, okay?
Yeah, later in the meeting. Hopefully not too late, for everyone's sake, but, thank you. Any other question? Was that it, Karen? Okay, alright, thank you. Anybody else? Alright. Thank you. Um, moving to new business, since our student prep is not here, uh, during the summer. Um, she may actually come back for one of the August meetings because they're gonna start their, uh, ESAC meetings, so once they set the agenda and the topics, uh, she may come back, uh, to discuss some of those. Um, moving to new business, uh, first we have the contract for two thousand seventeen eighteen, school year with, uh, Immaculate Heart of Mary Church. Uh, you already shared the, uh, contract with us. Did everybody get a chance to look at the contract? Okay, any, uh, first of all, is there a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen contract with the Immaculate Heart of Mary.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Um, a couple of questions. Uh, one of them is, I don't see it right now, but the, it's very, uh, nitpicky, but the renter is not capitalizing one of those sections, just if we can do that. Um, the other thing is...
Sorry.
The other question is, do we know when?
We have nothing, if not a sense.
Um, are they, are they okay with, uh, the statement here that the custodian contracts are?
We will find out, right.
Okay, so?
Yep, so once we share it with them. Oh, they are, okay, thank you, Poppy.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, those were my questions. So, given that that answer is pending, what are, what are we doing? Is there a different way that we need to approve this, or we approve it and they're okay with it, so we go ahead, whatever the, uh, wages end up being?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Alright then, if there are no other questions or comments, um, all in favor to approve the contract with, uh, Immacu-, uh, Immaculate Heart of Mary, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have a similar contract, this time with, uh, GAA for the, uh, school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Did everybody get a chance to look at that contract? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, comments, or questions on that one? Okay, same question. Do they, do those folks know?
No, I haven't talked to them.
Okay, so since that is not known, we still assume that they will, right. So we approve the contract, basically, if they say, you know what, this is a game changer for us, when the wages change, they don't sign. It's as simple as that, correct? Okay, alright. So I did not see anything, uh, different in the contract. I think we had made a couple of changes last year, so we're all good. All in favor to approve the contract with GAA, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, the next item is to appoint, uh, Stephen Sullivan as an authorized signer for the junior, senior student activity checking account. Did you wanna say a few things about that?
Uh, nope, just that, um, Mr. Sullivan oversees the student activity coordinator, um, and needs to be placed on the account, uh, to sign.
Okay, this is appointment by vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so is there a motion to appoint, uh, uh, Stephen Sullivan to be the authorized signer for the high school, uh, junior, senior high school activity checking account?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on that one? Okay, oh, there she is. Um, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have, uh, our favorite line, donations with Dave.
So, once again, we were very fortunate, I received another batch of desktops, which we desperately needed for the high school. We've already deployed them, uh, these are some of them right here, so, um, they, we were able to replace all of the classroom computers in this building, um, with that most recent donation, plus surplus from two previous donations, so all of the individual classrooms, like teachers' desks or students' extension classrooms, will, will, all, all have new towers, um, they already, actually already do have new towers as of, as of now, so.
Cool.
So.
What, what are the specs on the new ones? Where are we right now in terms of?
Well, it's a Hilo package six thousand five, it's by, you know, it's a machine that, that, uh, someone had, uh, the or, this particular organization will, um, um, buy a machine, um, use it for three years, standard warranty on it, uh, uh, computers, three years. Their protocol is, once the warranty is up, regardless of how well it's running, they, um, decommission it, and then there's a bureaucratic process on their end that has to go through to get released to us, so sometimes it sits in a, you know, storage unit, um, and then when they get approval, they send it to us, so.
What, what is the RAM?
They're better, they're be, obviously they're much better than the ones they're replacing.
Right. Uh, for instance, what is the RAM on them, uh, or?
Uh, it ranges between four and eight gigabits.
Okay, so it's, it's sufficient for whatever.
More than, yeah, I mean, four to eight gigabits is the, is the, uh, is the, uh, gigi, gigabytes is the, uh, is the, um, is, is the average.
Cool, that's great. Um, what do we need to do? Vote on this one, too?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so is there a, is, was, did you have anything else?
On that, I don't know, I mean, if you had any more questions, um, you know, this might, um, this, this, this particular organization goes in periods where they have, like, a series of donations they give us, like, every couple of months, and then they tend to go dark for six or ten months because of their replacement cycle, so I think this might be the last one for a while, so from this particular group, we might not hear anything for, for a while.
Okay.
That, that's, that's to be expected with their cycle.
Cool. Is there a motion to approve the donations, uh, computer donations?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing that I would say, please, I'm sure you're doing this, but thank them on our district's behalf.
They get, they always get, um,
A thank you note?
A, 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 a letter from the superintendent.
Okay.
Um, and is, and, uh, and, yeah, we, we, they, we've extended, um, we always extend the appreciation, and they realize how important this is to us, and if I can just say real quickly, um, this particular group goes out of their way to do extra things, they donate to a lot of other groups, but they do extra things to help us out. And they've mentioned that to us, and in one of our previous letters from them, we've indicated that we appreciate the above and beyond, and the extra courtesies they extend to the grandy schools. Because it's not just the fact of the donating, but to do extra things to help us, to help us to get more equipment than probably we only would get.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, uh, we're thankful for all of their donations, it's very helpful to our district. Um, we had a second, right? Yes, we did. Alright, all in favor to approve the computer donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, uh, anybody against? Any abstention? Okay, good. Alright, thank you, Dave. Okay, next one is the disposal of the old equipment. Okay, this is our usual, right?
Stuff comes in, stuff has to go out. I usually do this twice a year, usually in the summertime, and then I usually do it around, um, summertime after, um, you know, the latter part of winter again. So as we replace, there's other stuff that's obsolete and dysfunctional, um, goes to an organization that recycles it, breaks it down, recycles the metal, um, if there's any data on the drives, they, they destroy it, um, if, you know, uh, so it's an organization we've been using, uh, it's free of charge, we don't pay for it. The only time they do charge us a fee is if we, we give them CRT monitors, which we won't be doing in this particular, um.
Do we have any of those left?
We have, we, uh, we have a lot of them at the West Street East Metal School, um, so, um, a, a year from now, we, that, that won't be a problem for us, uh, un, unless we're stuck getting rid of them, I don't know how that will pan out, but in the high school, we, 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 we don't have any use. We do have a closet at the high school that has a bunch in there that at some point, we are gonna have to get rid of, um, I just thought that with our budget woes right now, I didn't wanna go asking for money to get rid of them, they're not bothering anybody at the moment sitting in a closet, so.
I'll ask you a silly question. I wonder if there's a market for that kinda stuff anymore on eBay or other places? Because they're so obsolete, you know, people then?
There's so many of them now, and they're so difficult to get rid of, that they, I think the going rate's between ten and twenty dollars per unit to get rid of them, because they have to be broken down a certain way, and there's, they don't have the salvage value that the other equipment has, so you're paying between ten and twenty dollars to get rid of them. Last year, I got rid of maybe about forty or fifty of them, and I was able to get a bargain price of five dollars apiece to get rid of them, as opposed to the ten, twenty.
But there's no way to, to sell them to people who may be interested in old technology and stuff?
I suspect if I put twenty outside tonight and I came back tomorrow morning, there'd probably be twenty there, or there probably would be more there, 'cause maybe people in town might think that's a place to get rid of them, and we might put the?
Yes. Of course, if they can figure out how to get here, you know, with all the fences and stuff, so. Cool, alright. So, uh, is there a motion to approve the disposal of the obsolete and dysfunctional equipment?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks again, Dave. Okay, so our school committee meeting schedule for the upcoming school year, including August, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
So you have a calendar?
Yep. So our regular would still be the first and third Monday of each month.
So just so we're clear.
Yep.
That would be August seventh and August twenty-first. It would be September eleventh and the twenty-fifth. And this is where we get into a little bit of a sticky, um,
Seventh, twenty-first.
We could do the sixteenth and the thirtieth, or instead of the eleventh, we could do the Tuesday after Labor Day, and then do the fifth and the eighteenth, that's. I mean Columbus Day, oh geez. The fifth is Columbus, no, the fourth.
You were talking about October, right?
No, I was talking about September.
That's, that's Labor Day.
You just said the?
Yeah, okay.
I was going back to September.
Oh. Um, first of all, for August, given that, you know, it's vacation time for some, is, is it good for everyone, the seventh and the twenty-first, or would you like to have a different schedule?
Well, the twenty-first is the Monday after my fiftieth birthday party, so that might be a stretch, I'm just kidding.
You're gonna have to suck it up. Um, it works for me.
Should we move it to fourteenth and twenty-eighth?
No, I'm just kidding, I'm fine.
No, no, I mean, to skip that fourth as well, because we're not gonna have that fourth. But then again, it's not, it's gonna catch up with us, right?
Yeah, it, yeah, I mean, if we're happy with August, then September, I think we could think about the Tuesday after Labor Day, the fifth and the eighteenth.
Yeah.
And that puts us on for the second and the sixteenth.
So if we do the fifth, then I will be late.
Okay.
Here's, um, my note, and this is not specific, because I don't have my vacation schedule yet. Uh, I don't know whether I'm gonna be out anytime during the first two weeks of August, I may or may not, so I don't wanna really change the schedule based on assumptions. Let's just go with what we have, then, uh, we'll see from there.
So it's the September fifth, Tuesday the fifth, and Monday the eighteenth?
September, Tuesday, the fifth, yeah.
Okay, and we're gonna leave August as the twenty-first? And the seventh is our retreat, isn't it? Didn't we have that as, as school committee retreat? So then October is, we go back to the first and the third Monday?
Right, except there are five Mondays in October.
Well, good.
So then we're looking at the second, are we gonna do the second, sixteenth, and thirtieth?
No, I would say you'd go to the sixth and the twentieth of November.
Mm-hmm. No, no, I'm looking at October still.
So it'd be the second and the sixteen?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just the second and the sixteenth?
Yeah.
And then the sixth and the twentieth of November?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm sorry, for, for, for September, we had the fifth, we had the eighteenth?
Yep.
And then we go into August, I mean, uh, October.
Second and sixteenth.
Okay. This is annoying that this is not copying anything. Tenth, second. Okay, and the eighteenth, no, sixteenth. Alright, November?
Sixth and twentieth.
Alright, so we don't wanna do, we're gonna be skipping three weeks, is that okay? Right?
I think so.
I mean, knowing us, it's likely we'll add something back in there anyway.
Okay.
And then December fourth and the eighteenth? Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay, December fourth and eighteenth, and probably that's it for this year, right?
Mm-hmm.
And as you said, we have the retreat, we're gonna have strategic plan meetings, uh, there are policy subcommittee meetings. Okay. Should we look into next year, too?
I think so.
Alright, so would the eighth be our first meeting?
Do I want to vote on the first?
Hmm?
Do you wanna vote on the first?
Well, we'll probably meet on the first, but, you know, we don't wanna let anybody know.
So the eighth and the twenty-second?
Eighth and the twenty-second.
I, um, I won't be here on the eighth, but the, you don't have to, I have vacation.
Yeah, we may be able to tweak it back and forth, I mean, Monday is our usual time, but if a majority cannot make it, we can move it to any other day, that there's no rule that said it has to remain.
Okay.
Um, February fifth?
Yep.
And February?
Nineteenth is vacation, school vacation.
Right, so we do the twenty-sixth, and then, 'cause then?
Yeah, and then we can skip the fifth in March and do twelve and twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, or we can move the twentieth to, I mean, uh, nineteenth to twentieth in February?
That's the whole week is vacation.
Oh, the whole, okay.
But it works out anyway, because in March, we can just, in April, I mean, it, it'll, it'll work out.
Yeah, kinda works.
So then March is the twelfth and twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And in April, do we wanna do nine and twenty-three?
And then twenty-three, mm-hmm.
Then we can get back to the Sunday and the seventh and twelfth. That worked out awful nice.
It did.
So twelfth, nineteen, no.
I think the seventh is my last meeting, I have to stop it. Just keeps threatening us.
Ah, she's counting, Dave, that's.
After ten years.
Alright, so the ninth, correct, of April?
Yep, and twenty-third.
And the twenty, tw- twenty-third.
That did work out nicely.
Mm-hmm.
Well done, friends.
Are we stopping there, or are we going?
Might as well do June.
Just one more?
June fourth and eighteenth.
What, what do we have in May? Seventh?
Oh, May, we did seventh and twenty-first.
Got him.
Hmm?
Got him.
Got him.
Yeah, I know, I spread them like?
Twenty-first. Alright, in June, we have the fourth, correct?
Yep.
And the eighteenth, which is election Monday, right? No, that's June. Uh, spent, one of the town meetings is right around that time, isn't it?
Is that the second Monday?
Well, first we have in May, then the, the fol, the follow-up will be in?
It'll depend on when they schedule it.
Yeah, so we'll say eighteen and we'll adjust.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright. All good? Okay. Do you have all the dates? We can catch up. Okay. Alright. That was it, that was the most exciting part of the meeting, and, uh, we're gonna move to your feedback from the, oh, no, no, this is the conference.
Right, this is the joint conference, I was, um, wondering if there was interest in the committee. Um, it, I can always beg and get the save a hundred dollars on registration if we sign up by July fifteenth, even though it's after.
Yep.
Um, it is a, uh, I think Jen can probably speak to, uh, what a wonderful experience it is. I will say, um, that in the budget, we did not budget for travel or for conferences, that was one of the things that we reduced.
Okay.
But certainly if there's interest, we would figure out a way.
Yeah, we can find a way to. Is there any interest? Usually that's not a good time for me.
I'll be away at a co, at a training, four-day training.
I'll go, do you wanna go?
Yeah, I'm interested.
Okay.
Jan, you were referring to which training?
I can get my?
Uh, it's a professional training.
Oh, you're out, okay.
I stayed with my mom at the MASs conference, so.
Yeah, I have tons of hotel points, I might as well use them.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you, Maria.
None of that is, um, Monday, right? No, it's Wednesday, Thursday.
Alright.
Alright.
Should we just change the order a little bit, if anybody's waiting for the other items, and then go to your entry plan findings?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Um, medication, delegation, registration?
Yeah, I have the forms for the state, it took a little bit, but, um, the school physician signed them last Friday, so I just need, um, your signature, Emery, and then Cheryl.
Okay.
So there's three documents here.
And are we using the same physician?
Um, we are using the new one, uh, Dr. Thomas Wazinki from Fairview, he signed the contract in April.
I couldn't, um, yeah, I looked at the contract, wasn't so sure about the name.
Yeah, I'm, I probably botched it, but, um, very nice gentleman, uh, had a lot of good, you know, feedback when I come on Friday, so.
Did you say from Fairview, P D metrics?
Yes.
And so I'm assuming this physician is familiar with school settings and does it for other districts?
Uh, this is his first time as a school physician, but there's another one on, on, um, the team there that works with Chicopee, so I think they've been speaking.
The trade-off being, I guess, based on our previous conversations, if, if we can reach him when we need him, and we can benefit from, you know, his expertise, is better than not having someone.
Right, he's been very timely with me, I've been emailing him back and forth, and, you know, like I said, I visited him on Friday, and he's been, uh, very quick to respond and accommodating, and any questions or anything that we need addressed, he's been a great help, so.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah. And he himself has school-aged children, so I think he, I think that's it, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's it, right?
Yeah, there's three.
Okay.
Is there a way to, um, post, 'cause I was looking for the med, the medication policy for the district on, for the school committee, um, policies, is there a way to get that posted? 'Cause when I looked, um, last week, I could?
Cause when I looked, um, last week, I couldn't find it, and it was...
Posted on the website?
Yeah, it was on there before, um, but we didn't get it changed, so...
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that. Yeah. It is, it is in the middle of an update, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And the next one is yours as well, right? Physician's contract, did you wanna say anything about that? I, I know that you already s- we already signed it, right? The contract?
Yes, it's currently active, so...
Okay. Okay. Anything else that the, uh, school committee needs to do on that one, or are we all good for now?
I think right now we're good.
Okay.
If there's any issues, I will definitely watch you.
Cool, cool, thank you, and, uh, welcome back.
Thank you.
Good to see you here again.
You never left.
Yes. Um, so you wanna go with the entry plan?
I'd be happy if people are here to hear about the budget, I would be happy to go to budget, or I can do entry plans.
Okay, let's do that. Alright, so let's table, uh, the last two items in our new business, which will be the entry plan findings that Cheryl will walk us through, and then updates on the district website. Um, the changes on it. So we'll table those, go to old business, which will include the budget-related items. Okay, so let's start with two thousand seventeen then. How are we doing, or how did we do?
Well, we're still doing.
Still doing?
So, yeah, just so, just to remind everybody, because of summer pay, there's still, um, three more payrolls to run that will happen. One this month, and then two more in August for the teachers and people who are on the summer pay schedule like Powers. And also, we have, the town runs four warrants in total, so there's three more warrants for payables, because we still have bills coming in. So the way it works is we do it up until the, the end of August, any bills that we have in. If there's anything we're expecting afterwards, we have to send a letter to the town by the fifteenth of September saying, we wanna encumber these funds out of the FY seventeen budget, so that we can hold money to, um, pay for those bills when they come in. Now, hopefully, we won't be doing any of that, because we're trying to chase down all the bills that we have. The encumbrances that we have in the report that I supplied you, um, has twenty-three thousand dollars worth of encumbrances, but it's down to ten now, because we've been trying to chase these bills and get them in the warrant, so those are the known expenses. So if you look at the overall results that I sent, um, what we have remaining in the budget as of when I ran this on the seventh, there's seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and change remaining from the eight-point-six-million-dollar budget. So there's about eight-point-five percent left. However, we have to remember that we have summer pays in there, so when I kinda do an analysis and see where we're gonna land, the discretionary money that we would have, other than what's committed to salaries, is about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. However, we also have to cover other expenditures within those salaries that were unanticipated, because we had school choice that's no longer available, so everything got switched into the local, has to be paid on that. We have other bills that are coming in, um, we, we purchased our oil, because we had such a good rate on it. You know, we don't wanna ca- pay the carrying costs into FY eighteen. So doing all those calculations and doing a, you know, a best guess at this point, we probably have about twenty-three thousand dollars left over in the budget after everybody's paid off for any other unanticipated bills that come in, and they will. I mean, we got, we got a bill in for arbitration today, you know, little things will come in that will still be in there, but...
Mediation.
Yeah, mediation, sorry. So fingers crossed, you know... So fingers crossed, you know, we, we've got money left in the budget to, to cover those expenses, and by the end of August, we'll have the best picture, because then every, all warrants that we'll have processed and all the payroll will have processed. But that's pretty much where we stand right, right now in terms of FY seventeen. Um, grants are all getting spent down, so we have, we'll have probably some residual money in Title One and Title Two. They're still being spent, cause there's still salaries running, but all the other grants are spent down to zero. Um, the reason why we have some money left in Title One and Title Two is cause we did some reclassing, um, because we had money in other grants from, that can't carry over one more year, that we reclassed into the old, uh, Title One and Title Two from last year, because it was the last ye- this is the last year we can expend those, so we needed to make sure we fully expended those, which we did. So that's kind of in a nutshell FY seventeen. Any questions?
Questions? Um, the... The monthly reports that we receive from the town, are, did we use those at all? Are we, are we matching those?
We're working through May's right now.
Okay.
You know, we're matching on a lot, there's some that isn't, so we gotta get some more information from the town. I also asked for a revenue report from the town, so we can match and make sure we agree. I mean, we should get the same revenues, they come in, they come in a- as a, as a, um, an ACH, basically a payment to the town directly, and so we can get a report on that, but just to make sure everything's posting correctly. You know, they, we get expenditures from them every month, but we don't usually get revenues. So now's the time, while we're waiting for June to, to ultimately, you know, cost out and, and expend out, to start looking at revenues and make sure those are gonna match as well. Cause obviously, on our, on our revolving accounts, it's the difference between the revenues and expenditures that says how much money the school has left.
Right, and, and obviously, that sometimes led in the past to some problems, because what was, what was a gap in, on one side, wasn't, uh, shown as a gap on the other side, and, you know, so many years later, we find out that now we have an accumulated sum of whatever, and, you know, it leads to, uh, more difficult conversations, and that's, that's the main reason why I'm asking. If, I, I, thank you, I appreciate that we're having those conversations now. Uh, but hopefully, by the time we get to September, September fifteenth especially, when, you know, that's the cutoff, right? For, to do anything related to two thousand seventeen.
Right.
We're all on the same page with both sides of the ledger, so that, you know, there is no, uh, no questions left, um, going forward.
That is the goal, we do not wanna walk away from this fiscal year, not in agreement as to what, what's spent and what's left.
Yeah. So that, uh, leads to my second question is, um, would, uh, you know, you've been, you've been, uh, meeting, uh, uh, speaking with Chris.
Mm-hmm.
So if there is any leftover, because, you know, anybody who hears that there's potentially twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars left over in the school budget may, you know, uh, may have some questions around those. I'm sure you're gonna have some conversations as to what can be done with those funds.
Mm-hmm.
And this is in follow-up to the conversation that we had, uh, at the joint meeting with the finance committee, um, uh, and Chris, uh, where we discussed whether or not there is, there is an opportunity or there is room to create some backup funds for those areas, special education and insurance, uh, so that we don't find ourselves in, in, you know, unexpected situations. Whether that, that gets approved, expected, um, uh, accepted or not, we'll find out, but it would be a good conversation to have, so that we do all that in transparency.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's all I had.
The, the other thing I just wanted to say about FY seventeen is, um, food service, cause we love to talk about food service. Um, I did post the ugly report, because I didn't get the, the, uh, prettied-up one from Chartwell's. I just got it on Friday, um, and I posted that today, but they neglected to put in the month-to-date results. But if you look at the ugly report, um, June actually made a profit of three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, I don't know if I saw that, and I was gonna ask you about that. Is it in the, uh, folder?
Uh, yep. And then so the, that one.
Two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollar surplus.
Is it really, though?
What? No.
Yeah.
No, the operational loss, the, the operational loss, that's why we don't do that one, cause it's so tough to read. But the operational loss is eighty-nine, eighty-six, fifty-one, so under the ten thousand dollars. But also keep in mind, um, they have to take a look at inventory, and any adjustment in inventory, the auditor is going to have to adjust and charge, potentially charge to, um, food service.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, the term profit, I don't think should even be on this paper.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, I get where they're going with this, but I don't understand why they use that, that term.
Mm-hmm.
It's very confusing.
They make it, we can, we could probably ask for a different term.
I, I, yeah, personally, I don't like the term.
Excess.
So I guess the story is this, it doesn't change our, uh, question when we met them last time, and, um, I had a couple of things on this one, uh, one of them is answered through this. When we look at last year, we had thirty-one thousand-plus gap, uh, which became part of the overall conversation at the town meeting. This year, we are under nine thousand-dollar gap, which is within the contingency of, uh, of the programs. That said, the concept of really every year looking or shooting for, almost shooting for, uh, you know, a deficit, it doesn't make much sense. I'm just still trying to see, the best-case scenario is not to have any deficit, right? How do we get there? Uh, and I appreciate that this is actually even better than what we saw last, last month. Uh, we were at ninety-three hundred or so, now it's down to eighty-nine. So we are i- i- in the right direction, but how do we just push it in the right direction, eighty-nine hundred dollar more, so that, you know, we find the way to run this program without any deficit?
But it, and I look at it a little different, because to me, it's falling within that ten thousand-dollar contingency. So I, I'm okay with that.
I mean, we're, I think we're all okay, because we are good this year.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm saying going forward, if, if we fell at nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars every year, that's workable, because it's within that contingency, that ten thousand-dollar contingency that's built into the budget anyway.
Yeah.
I, I agree, um, but, I mean, we had to micromanage this so much, and it takes time away from other things. So at some point, we have to decide where we wanna put our energies.
Yes, I mean, the concept of starting a year with a budget that is not balanced, and saying that there will be a deficit, that, in this context, I mean, there are some contexts where it is, it may make sense, it will make sense. But in this context, uh, it doesn't make that much sense to me, that's what I'm trying to say. Uh, if, you know, there was something that said our budget is nine thousand dollars more than what we had shown you, even that would be a better conversation to have than if you're saying we're gonna be within that contingency. Cause that gives me the impression that we're shooting for that contingency, not to improve necessarily beyond that contingency. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. And, you know, businesses, business, circumstances change, I understand that, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to see whether there is any more room for us to improve this. Uh, I agree with Deanne that it's good to be within the contingency, how we planned, and we're actually better than the contingency. So that's good, a lot of improvement, but is there any way to make it even better?
And, and I'm with you, I think we kinda felt that they were shooting to use that contingency. And, I mean, I have no, I wanna feed the kids, that's number one, and I, and I, so I'm with Deanne in that part, but part of it feels like they're not really trying to figure out a way to work without spending all of that.
Well, they may, they may improve.
They may be, they may be, it just feels...
We're ahead by twenty-three thousand dollars than we were a year ago, it's pretty good.
You know, I, I, that, that, that absolutely true.
And we also add extra expense with more, uh, because that was not, well, the, the extra lunchtime for the, for the staff that weren't, um, budgeted for.
And, and, you know, I, I'm not willing to compromise, just what Marie said, the quality of the food for the kids.
I don't think we ever discussed compromising quality.
No, I, I'm just saying, but I think at some point, you know, when you're, when you're looking at it through purely a financial lens, at some point, it is gonna start to erode the, the quality.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sure that's gonna be our filter at all times anyway, but, uh...
And so I'll just share what, what Andrew shared with me, he just wanted to note that the junior-seenor high school's schedule change cost an additional eighty-three thirty, and the kitchen renovations, um, at East Meadow, which curtailed some of the operations, were another thirty-one ninety-four. So if those two things hadn't happened, which happened to happen, they actually would have been a surplus this year, twenty-five hundred.
So then it's safe to say that we're not going to have those two factors going into next year.
That's kinda the point, yeah.
We can pretty much hold the feet to the fire, saying, okay, well, those two factors are no longer part of the equation.
Yeah. No, and, uh, I always believe that there's room to improve anything, but that said, I, I will go with Jen that, you know, we would be amiss if we did not acknowledge that last year we were in a place that is, that was much more different than where we are, uh, today. So yes, absolutely, and we appreciate the effort to get there.
And I would be remiss if I didn't remind the committee that, um, the school building committee has been having, uh, many conversations about, um, the, uh, making sure that the cafeteria is open and ready for East Meadow students at the beginning of the school year. And so, um, the school, um, project manager has been, uh, overseeing that very tightly, but there is always the potential that we run into, um, a situation where that cafeteria may not be open for a week or two, um, and we have to have an alternative plan. So while we don't expect it, um, there are things that happen in a school year that, with a building project, like running over the cable for the internet today. Which is why we don't have the internet.
Good thing we don't cook food with internet.
Right, yes.
Alright, so, so that's good. Was it included in the surplus that you mentioned? Cause that, that would mean that there is some leftover on that contingency line too, right?
Um, he would, no, that would be just operationally, that would be the profit twenty-five thirty-seven if those two events hadn't occurred. So that, that would mean we would have the contingency.
Remember you mentioned that for two thousand seventeen, where you're sitting today, you're seeing twenty-three thousand dollars? Does that include the a thousand dollars or so that will be left over from the contingency?
Um, no, I'm not including that, because we, we also still have to look at what happens with inventory when there's any charge there, so...
I'm asking that because do, this is, we, we have a revolving fund around this, right? For, around lunch, to, do revolving funds get depleted at the end of the year, if it's lunch and stuff, or do we keep it just in case?
It depends on the fund, but a, the school lunch fund, basically, if it has a balance, it should carry over when you start the new year with the, with the balance from the year before.
The balance, okay, alright. Cool. Any other questions, N seventeen, FY seventeen? Okay. So let's move to... Eighteen, did you wanna preface it with the last item?
I would, um, I'm gonna preface, um, D with C, and just say that, uh, we are moving through the FY eighteen budget, uh, finalizing process as we complete the hiring, um, for, uh, positions that are currently open, uh, either through resignation or retirement. Um, and once those, um, hires are complete, then we'll, um, uh, repost the budget, um, as those salary, um, lines, uh, become more formalized and finalized.
Can, can, can we just, uh, clarify that one more time, again, just to make sure that we don't lead to misunderstandings? There were positions that, that became open after the budget, so this is not us just going out and...
Right.
Hiring for new positions that we're not discussing the context of the budget.
Correct.
These are positions that became vacant and we're, uh, we're filling those positions.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to point out that, you know, the bottom line of the budget can't change, it's voted by the town.
Right.
You guys vote and accept it as a number, but things happen within the budget when you do hirings. You might get somebody in for less money, more, we'll have to adjust, you know, other accounts to make sure the bottom line's the bottom line, and then we'll present a new one that you can revote, but, you know, we're not changing the bottom line, but things happen.
Okay.
Much as the plan, the plans change.
How many positions are we looking at that were unexpected?
Um, unexpected that I can think of, uh, currently, one-point-six, uh, positions that changed between the end of the budget, um, and now, um, and, uh, oh no, I'm sorry, two-point-six. And two positions that we were aware of.
Okay.
Prior.
So two-point-six unexpected?
Mm-hmm. And I will say directly related to the instability of the, um, reduction in force, uh, that we're involved in, uh, now, uh, on a cyclical basis.
Wha- what do you mean, Cheryl?
Those were the explanations given.
Yes, that people, um, were, um, uh, concerned about, uh, job security, um, and that they may or may not have received a reduction in force, um, and, um, began looking elsewhere.
Yeah.
And/or were recruited.
Yeah. No, I mean, uh, when situations like this, that's, that's not unusual, it's not unexpected.
Nope.
And that's one of those side effects.
Correct.
But in the heat of the discussion, we tend to overlook some of these side effects, and some of the folks, you know, who decide to go elsewhere, they are, you know, uh, liked, uh, appreciated members of our community, and we have to start from, from scratch at that point. Um, when do you anticipate the hirings to be finalized, um?
Uh, we are going through the process with most of them at this point. Um, I would say by, uh, hopefully, uh, early August to mid-August. Yep.
Cool.
So hopefully in time for our eight-twenty-one school meeting?
Maybe the majority, yes. Of the hires, yeah.
Is, is there any risk to anything that was planned for next year as far as classes o- offered, and...
No.
Okay.
Not at this point.
Okay. And I'm asking that so that everybody can hear that there is really no change on that front, thank you.
You're welcome. And so, um, discussion regarding, uh, the budget... And so, um, discussion regarding, uh, the budget, uh, gap and the failed override and that impact, um, I just wanted to go over with the committee, um, and the community who's here tonight, um, what was not, um, put back into the budget as a result of that. Uh, so we had, um, wanted in the best interest of, um, continuity for our second grade students, uh, we have a mid-year retirement that we wanted to hire a full year, uh, teacher for, so that, uh, the students would have a full year experience with a teacher, um, that was eliminated. Uh, we eliminated the data manager, uh, position, which is critical, and we'll talk about the website transition and, and, uh, why that's slower than anticipated. Uh, but the data manager, uh, position was not funded, uh, there was a special education position, um, that was eliminated. Um, there was a high school English language arts position, uh, that was eliminated. Uh, the lunch monitors at the high school, uh, was eliminated. There was a special education tuition, um, line, uh, to your point, Emery, about having, uh, funding for tuition, uh, as it evolves in the school year. And then, uh, three elementary school paraprofessional positions and the elementary head teacher positions. Um, which actually was a correction in the budget, um, that we actually don't have those positions. We didn't fulfill those positions this year, so we eliminated them, uh, for the following year, this year.
After lunch monitor, you said something, what was that?
A special education tuition?
Special education tuition.
Oh, okay, tuition.
And that's not exactly the two ninety-six, but it's, um, it's a little bit over the two ninety-six, but you can't really get that to be exact.
Right.
With salaries and, so.
Does this, Carol's not here, but does this affect in any way the ability of the S L A program to do the reach outs that she, she's been trying to do?
No, 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 that's fully staffed, it's staffed a little bit differently, but it's fully staffed.
Okay. Cause that was one of the opportunities for us to really bring either back some students or, uh, have some students who showed interest in, in our program. Okay.
And remind me again what happens with the eliminated E L A position at the high school?
Um, so with the eliminated E L A position, uh, we have, um, uh, we have teachers who are dual certified, um, teaching both a social studies, uh, portion of a schedule and an E L A portion of a schedule. So, uh, some of the class sizes do increase, um, and, uh, we end up, um, teaching as they have been, uh, but doing more of this where, um, standard and honors are, uh, together, uh, in a section. So it's differentiated within the classroom instead of having two separate classes of honors and standards.
And are these teachers, um, trained in this differentiated learning?
Yes, yes, yeah.
They've done P D on this?
Yes, mm-hmm.
So, so have you had to cut any of the de-elective classes? I know that was something you were trying to steer with.
Um, not at this point, no, no, the electives are running, um, I know that, uh, if Steve Sullivan, uh, the principal is here, um, there is some discussion about, um, the, uh, advanced placement biology course and, and how to manage both the course section and the lab component of that, um, and that might come at an expense, uh, to us, um, as we have, we may have to add an additional section, um, but not a teacher. Uh, so we may, um, end up paying for a teacher to teach six out of their seven, um, and we've done that before. And I think we have, uh, people that are willing to do it, but he's just getting his feet wet, his feet on the ground and, and trying to see the big picture and see what options we have.
There's probably some strain on the, um, on, on those electives that used to benefit from having one more E L A teacher, so now it has to be spread over, so the class sizes may be, uh, larger or.
Correct.
We have to shuffle it around different ways, and if the demand is not there, maybe that's, but those were always on-demand classes.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the three paraprofessionals for the elementary school, um, what is, what, what does that do to the teacher? Like, like, does that impact the teacher and the class sizes, especially with the younger ages?
It doesn't impact the class size, um, a, a couple of those situations are, are students that are no longer with us, uh, so we may have deployed those paraprofessionals, um, in a different manner. Um, I, I, I'm not gonna speak to the details, if you'd like, I can have Carol come back, um, and talk to the details about what it means, um, specifically to this special education program, but it doesn't affect, uh, class size.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I think it's important that we understand the ramifications, not only for us, but for the community.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Uh, for FY seventeen, the senate version of the budget, wh- where, where did we land on that one?
Uh, let's see. So the ultimate amount.
Well, the, the part that I could not decipher, very generously, they added ten more dollars per student, so given that we have about seven hundred fifty students, that's seventy-five hundred dollars. Is there anything in addition to that that was tagged along? I, you know, I'm trying to understand that.
No, when you have, when you have declining enrollment, um, then you, the foundation budget doesn't increase except you get the, when it declines, you get that, um, additional money per student, and that's the only change that you get. So you're talking eighteen or seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yep.
At this point, the total, you want the two numbers?
The, um, uh, chapter seventy and local, is that what you're asking about?
Right.
Yes.
So for chapter seventy is four million, six twenty-two, eight-ten, and the required local contribution is four million, six thirty-six, eight-seventy-six.
Six thirty-six?
Yeah, eight-seventy-six.
Eight-seventy-six. And these are the senate numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, can you repeat that last, that E L A?
Yep.
Four million, six hundred thirty-six, eight-seventy-six.
Cheryl, can I ask you a question about what's not coming back? Um, you did said elementary head teachers, well, we didn't have them last year.
Correct, but they were in the budget.
They were, you're putting them in, thank you, I just need that.
Sure thing.
So when I'm asked.
Yep. So I do need to make the committee aware, although I don't have exact numbers, uh, title one has, um, begun to come in, um, and it looks like it's gonna be about fifteen thousand dollars less than, uh, FY seventeen, and title two A looks like it's gonna be about four thousand dollars less.
How much fifteen less for title one?
Yeah, but I will confirm that, but just to remind.
And what was the other one, title?
Title two A, which is our, um, teacher quality grant.
Yeah, and how much?
Four thousand.
Well, you're just both bringing in all kinds of great news, aren't you? Thank you for that.
Yeah. Is, so it looks like the conversation is still ongoing, uh.
It's, yes.
Uh, in Boston. They're not getting the revenue that they're looking for.
No, no.
And it's already been, uh, said that if it, you know, if they can't find any other way to, to balance their budget, they're gonna start looking into things, and usually they look into circuit breakers and this and that, so should we really hold on very, very tight and potentially expect some more of these things, which seem small for some districts, but really are major amounts for, for us?
Yes, absolutely, um, our title one, uh, we fund, uh, parts of two teacher salaries, uh, for intervention for students. Um, and title two A is also a class size reduction, uh, portion of title two A is a class size reduction, um, expenditure for part of a teacher's salary. Um, so yes, um, we need to be aware of that, um, because as, as you're aware, the local does not have any, um, any flexibility in it to subsume the reductions in the, the federal grants.
Okay, and these would be good conversa- these would be good to mention during those conversations with Chris as well.
Yes, yep.
Cause we're not, we don't, we still don't know what eighteen means, I mean, for, many times, we, you know, we have these town meetings and we walk o- out and everybody thinks this is final, we're done.
Right, right.
The state is still discussing whether or not they're gonna have some of these funds, and when they don't, they usually come back and cut something on the school side as well. Okay. Any other questions on FY eighteen? Did you have anything else to add, Mark or Cheryl?
The only thing I was gonna mention is that since our last school committee meeting, Desi has approved the language of the, the food service contract for eighteen, so that will go to Chartwell's now for signatures from their executives and then to us for signatures.
Okay, uh, would it be possible for us to see the updated language?
Sure.
As it's going, okay, that would be great.
I'll put a copy in the, in the folder.
Please, alright, thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? When you say that, um, we're getting, we, we lost a sped tuition, what does that exactly mean?
So that was a contingency for us, uh, for what we know, uh, or what we can assume we would, um, in, that tuitions that historically we know have, um, come to the district, uh, whether that is current Granby students that require, um, an out-of-district placement, or families that have moved in, um, and require, uh, out-of-district placement. So we know historically that we need to have some kind of contingency for that, um, and that was the contingency, so.
So if something happens, we have to go to the town?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So then, um, based on our meeting with FinCom and the select board back in May.
Mm-hmm.
And we now know that we can request funds during the year, reserve funds, unplanned, anything unplanned, unbudgeted. Um, we're gonna be taking advantage of that, right?
Well, we're gonna have to have the conversation around that.
Right, yes.
Because if it's unexpected, it's unexpected.
And, and I think, um, we also need to be cautious of the school choice numbers, um, and how they come in, um, and that's, uh, obviously on the census, uh, or on the, uh, SIMS data. Um, so that's a little bit later, um, in the fall, um, but if those are different, then, um, there is absolutely nothing in the budget that we have, uh, to buffer us from that.
Well, I was very, very specific in writing these two different funds down, the reserve funds, which has a hundred and thirty thousand dollar cap, anything unplanned or unbudgeted, and then the capital plan funds, that we can make, um, formal requests from the finance committee during, during the year.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
So the capital would be related to anything, obviously capital, but the general, general reserve would be for anything else, yes, unexpected.
Yes.
Uh, that was my understanding too, yep.
Those are key words.
Key words. Um. Just gonna ask one more question, I forgot what it was. Alright, so I guess we're gonna have a lot more conversations around these. Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll move back.
So Jen, I don't want.
Oh, yeah, strategic plan and review, is there anything that we need to say?
Uh, that'd be part of the retreat, and actually after we do the entry plan, findings and, uh, goal setting.
Okay.
We'll bring that all together.
The retreat is for us.
Yes.
But we're gonna start the process to include stakeholders and start looking at, is that gonna be the outcome of the retreat that we're gonna have? Is that what we're expecting to have? Okay, and we wanna do that sooner than later, right? What happened?
We're just leaving, cause she's going to, the entry plan up there. Everybody's leaving and you didn't know.
That could be the case.
So, uh, do you want the light? Um, do we need the light though, do you think?
Maybe just that one.
Okay.
Sure.
It'll actually get better.
I'd like to start by saying, uh, that this is a draft, um, and I'm bringing it forward, um, to the school committee first. Uh, first, it's, it's been, um, discussed at, uh, leadership, um, but, uh, really, this is, uh, the findings of the data collection that I've done all year long, uh, this first year, um, but I am open to the fact that I may have missed something, um, and I would be happy to include that if I have missed something that the school committee or members of the community feel, um, is important. So, uh, just a little bit of an introduction, um, it has been a pleasure to serve as the superintendent, uh, for this, uh, first year, uh, with Granby. Um, there is a strong sense of hopes for the district moving forward, um, as well as a clear understanding of the challenges and op- and opportunities facing the district. Um, the building of the new elementary school is just one example of the commitment of the Granby community to educating its students. Um, and we are all at central office and here at the high school reminded of that, um, with the construction noise that we get to hear, um, every day. And, uh, we laugh about it, um, because we are very excited about the opportunity to have a brand-new building, uh, for our students in Granby. Um, what the process involved, uh, was, uh, in, individual interviews with, uh, school committee members, with central office and building level leadership team members, the town manager, department heads, the finance committee chair, and volunteer organization leaders. Um, I also conducted, uh, small group interviews with, uh, each of the building staffs, um, and also with the Granby junior senior high school, uh, student groups and the custodial staff. And I basically used, um, three very open-ended questions that led to a lot of discussion. Um, I asked, uh, what do you think the schools and the school departments do well? What challenges do the schools and the school department face, and what does being part of the Granby community mean to you? And what does the Granby community value as important for the schools and the school department to understand? Um, I also conducted a community survey online, and that was very well responded to, um, and very encouraging, actually, and that's where the statement of, there's a lot of energy and positive hopes for the school district, um, the survey was overwhelmingly positive with the work of the school committee, with the work of the leadership team, um, moving forward, uh, the school department. In addition, all year long, I conducted, uh, school visits, uh, with the building principal and also alone, um, to understand the instructional focus of our schools and to gain a sense of each school's culture and climate, um, and to understand each school's routines and procedures. Um, had many conversations with teachers and staff, paraprofessionals and custodians, um, and it was a real pleasure to, to observe the lessons and performances and other events, uh, throughout the school year. Uh, one of the things I noticed was how well-attended all of our school-sponsored concerts and art shows and athletic events are. Uh, for a small town like Granby, we do have a large number of families that come out to each one of our, uh, each one of our events, and, and that certainly is a pleasure to be a part of. In addition, I reviewed documents, um, again, this is all year long, I didn't do it, um, in a weekend, um, but all year long, uh, I looked at the strategic plan, um, developed by the interim superintendent, um, and the strategic plan, uh, that was developed by the school committee in the fifteen sixteen school year, uh, the current policy manual, the emergency operations manual, the employee handbook, collective bargaining agreements, curriculum guides, program of study, uh, professional development plans, leadership team meetings and agendas and minutes, uh, school and student enrollment and demographic data, the district technology plan, uh, the facilities studies of two thousand and ten. the facilities studies of two thousand and ten and two thousand and fourteen, the new school building committee minutes, school building committee minutes of fourteen through sixteen, the master plan for the town, the Capitol Committee Report of two thousand and ten, and the annual reports. So again, the purpose of this is to share my initial findings based on the data, but also to get feedback from you all. Again, if I have missed something, something that you feel should be in the report, because this will be public and on the webpage and will be the basis for us working together to have strategic initiatives and revise the strategic plan based on what we've seen. So, the findings I organized into six categories, and those are based on effective standards and indicators of effective school districts. And those are leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, student support, HR management and staff development, and then fiscal and asset management. So there is a lot of text here, let me just finish. I added a category because it did come up in some of my initial conversations with local community members, and that was family and community engagement. And I pulled that out of the rubric for effective administration, administrative leadership, and the Superintendent rubric. So there are seven categories that the data kind of is discussed in. And so the findings, they are text-rich. But in general, under leadership and governance and communications, the Granby School Committee is a strong committee. They are a pleasure to work with, and even though they're my boss, I can, I'm not trying, Brown knows anybody, but they truly are a pleasure to work with. I have yet to work with a committee that is so actively participatory in meetings, doing research, reading on educational issues, sharing information back and forth, that they encourage public input, which is critical, and that they're always focused on decision-making in the best interest of students. It's a pleasure working in that environment. In addition, the School Committee has taken an active role in working with local and state legislators on behalf of the Granby students. And that is evidenced by their participation in things like Day on the Hill at the State House, the MASC Roundtable on Chapter Seventy Funding Formula Review Implementation, and the MASC Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Legislative Meeting. And that's just a few of the things that have been going on that the School Committee members have participated in. The School Committee is actively reviewing the policy manual, but in addition, is very active in implementing any changes that need to happen throughout the school year as we receive legal advice or program review requirements. So the School Committee is very helpful in moving those changes forward. The School Committee strongly supports the strategic plan and is, I think, working together and moving forward this year in setting measurable goals with measurable outcomes that we will align to student achievement goals. And then also, I think, this year's work is really about engaging the broader community of Granby to understand what those goals are and how we're meeting our goals. In terms of the leadership team, the leadership team has undergone significant changes in the last few years. The School Committee has hired a new Superintendent and pupil personnel director. In addition, the principal position was eliminated this year at the elementary level, and one of our elementary principals left, so we combined and hired a new principal. And we have also just recently hired a new high school principal. So we have basically a brand-new administrative team, and we are excited to collaborate. One of our goals is to empower teacher leadership and develop sustainable processes for continuous improvements at all levels of the school department and school district. So some basic ideas that we can think about moving forward is how do we ensure that School Committee meetings focus on measures of student achievement and meeting the goals of the strategic plan? I know we've been trying to do that, but I think next year is critical for that work. How does the leadership team function in creating teacher leadership opportunities focused on student achievement? How does the district communicate to the larger community about successes and needs within the school department? And how does the district implement the strategic plan, measure success and revise as necessary based on data? And how does the School Committee and school district communicate financial requirements of educating children to the larger community and town boards? It's critical for us. And then what are the most impactful strategies that will move the district in the next two to five years? So I didn't know if the School Committee had any comments on that section, because that really is a large part of your work, the leadership and the governance section. And I would be happy to go through this and then bring it back at our next meeting, so you have some time to sort of digest it and maybe talk about it in totality. Or we can do it now, as we often do, which is just to think out loud. Which gets us in a little trouble sometimes, but that's okay.
So Cheryl, when we say opportunities for further inquiry, these are from your perspective, or these aren't that clear at this point in time?
I think not clear, but maybe guiding questions that could help us look at the strategic plan, look at our goals, because I know we had talked about goals with Dorothy Presser, but really start to align the goals of the district with the school improvement plans so that principals are working with their staff around a tightly-aligned objectives for the school district.
I'm intrigued that the questions are about whether we are able to measure our impact on certain things.
Right.
And, you know, I think they'll agree that it's important to us as well.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not just turn our wheels, but we wanna make sure that what we're doing is meaningful and it's serving the purpose. And that needs to align with the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, if it's not clear, it's good to know, then we can make it part of our conversation when we get into the strategic plan review phase.
Right, and I think it came out of the May meeting with the Finance Committee. For them to have a list of questions for us and us to be able to answer those questions and open up the conversation around, you know, these are some maybe misunderstandings that have occurred over time that we can correct. And that, yes, we're moving toward measurable outcomes for students. So, you know, I think the example we used in May was, you know, how many of our students are, as freshmen, having to take non-credit-bearing coursework? Which is an indication to us that they're not prepared as well as they need to be in order to do college-level work. And that that would be a measurable outcome that we would look towards. So, under curriculum and instruction, this really was, from the perspective of students and families in the community and staff, it's very clear that people believe that committed and caring teachers make Granby Public Schools a great place to learn and grow. Parents in the community perceive Granby teachers to be dedicated, heartfelt, caring people, concerned about the learning and well-being of all students. In listening to the community members discuss the strengths of the district, it is clear that the community truly believes that one of the key strengths of the school district lies in the supporting and caring relationships that our staff develop with students. And I read that whole thing because it's really important. I heard that over and over and over again. It's the relationships, whether it's a graduate, a current School Committee member who is a former graduate, people in the community who are town board members, parents and students. It's the relationships that our teachers build with students that are most impactful for our children and our families. I think it's important to recognize that the committee's work with the interim Superintendent, Dr. Hool, around social-emotional learning and the task force that was created did result in budget and resourcing to develop the social-emotional learning program. And that's quite a celebration and a success. Not only did we implement peace builders for all students, but we also developed and designed and implemented a social-emotional learning program here at the high school which allows students who have been disenfranchised and maybe homeschooled to come back and participate in our academic program with significant supports that were not there prior. Was that a bless you, did something? In terms of curriculum, I don't think this is a dry subject, but I think maybe sometimes it could be dry. But the curriculum maps, which are basically the scope and sequence of the year for teachers, are in place. And that was work that, again, was done by Dr. Hool. I think it is, it is, I would like to say thank you to the Science Department in particular, who have taken the next-generation science standards and started to work on creating the maps. That's a huge project and undertaking with just a few members of the department, because it's so small. But it's a lot of work and it's a lot of change that's coming to the science and how we teach science, and they've been working at that. And the math and the English-language arts maps have been aligned to the Common Core standards. With all that said, the maps are not unit plans. And unit plans in all content area have not been developed, and that really is our work moving forward. The NIASC report recommended that the selection of a common unit design template be decided upon. In the Curriculum Work Group, I would like to say thank you to them. They met and have begun work on this and begun to provide professional development to the staff so that we're working on designing units, which are six to eight weeks of instruction with all of the standards and learning outcomes, also all the differentiation that we just talked about, differentiation for special education students, for English-language learners. All of that, the unit is really what helps teachers talk to each other about what students are learning and are they being successful. And so that work is ongoing. An area of great pride, of course, at Granby Junior/Senior High School is our advanced placement. And I will say it again, even though Emery has said this. Seventy-five percent of students took AP classwork, which is the highest rate in the state. Granby was only one of thirty schools to offer a new AP Computer Science course in Massachusetts and Connecticut. And only in two hundred and thirty schools is computer science offered across thirty-nine states. So, we have a lot to be proud of in what we offer in terms of AP programming. And we have offered, and/or are offering currently, AP coursework in English Language, English Literature, Biology, Chemistry, US Government, Statistics, and Calculus. And I believe we've offered Physics, but I couldn't confirm that, so I have to go back.
You didn't.
We did, okay. And so we have staff that have received a lot of training and are very flexible in what they can offer. And that's a real testament to their dedication to the students, that they retain these certificates and are able to teach a variety of AP coursework. The school district has implemented the educator evaluation system. But one of the things that we noticed is that we have not reviewed that for inter-rater reliability, which means that a principal in one building needs to be trained in a way that they rate the instruction and the teaching the same way that the principal in another building does. And that hasn't occurred yet. And so you see some flexibility, I mean, some differentiation in the evaluation, the summit of evaluation. The school district does not have an educator evaluation work group that's comprised of teachers and administrators who regularly work together to reflect upon the implementation and to review the process and to clearly plan for communicating out any changes that happen regarding educator evaluation to all staff. And that's a practice to have. And again, these are opportunities for further inquiry. How do we collaborate to ensure a focus on continuous improvement within the district? How do we manage declining revenue during declining enrollment period while increasing required services and focusing on developing effective programming for students? What are the next goals for social-emotional learning and how do we measure district success? And what has been successful in the district's implementation of educator evaluation system? And what are the next steps to ensuring inter-rater reliability and supportive school culture for building instructional capacity in all classrooms? So I don't know if the committee has any questions on that one or thoughts.
So isn't that, you know, something really to be proud about?
There's a lot to be proud of, yeah.
But then how do we get that out?
Yeah.
To where people would wanna choice in rather than choice out, right?
Yep, exactly.
It seems, this is not necessarily directly related to this, but it seems that we, by necessity almost, put out too much at once, as opposed to putting out, you know, simplified information one piece at a time. This is not really, for those of us who've been looking at this now, it becomes natural. But, you know, a few years ago, when I first came on the board, probably all these things would have been pretty hard to understand, pretty hard to digest. So, if we can just put ourselves in those shoes and simplify the information that we put out there, it may be helpful for everyone to participate in the conversation, like Mike is saying. You know, isn't this a good story? Yes, but if we're not really accustomed to hearing the terminology, what this means really to me, to the community, to my own children, or, you know, to my children who may want to go to Granby from other towns, I don't know, right?
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I know that these are your thoughts and your, I guess, just from the whole process, but I would imagine there are some red flags in here that you picked up on.
Mm-hmm.
I know that some of the things that we've talked about being important is having students input.
Correct, yep. The district has not implemented student input requirements, yep.
So, I mean, when I look at that whole section, it seems pretty important on the one hand, and yet on the other hand, as I look at that one section, I think, that seems like a lot more time commitment
Right.
from teachers, and so I'm just, again, thinking out loud, you know, like, there's only so many hours in the day.
Right.
You know, how do we possibly get to the next level, given, you know...
So that's a perfect example of where if there is a educator evaluation work group, that they would come together and identify, you know, we've done the implementation, we've done the professional development, this year we spent a lot of time with the new principals and staff around goal setting. So we really have the first parts of educator evaluation system, we feel like, shorted up. So we don't have to spend a lot of time doing that. So now maybe it's, how are we using student input in the evaluation system? So the work group could decide that this is the year that we're going to consider exactly what you're talking about. How do we do this? How do we do this so that it's least impactful, doesn't take away from classroom instruction, that teachers get information that they need so that they can improve practice?
So that it's useful.
So that it's useful.
So we're not just checking something off of a list saying that we did that.
Yep, yep. And so how do we do it in a small enough bite so that it is useful? And, you know, certainly, you know, a Superintendent can come in and say, okay, we're gonna do, you know, this survey, and out it goes, and then, you know, it just collects dust on a piece of paper somewhere. But if teachers and administrators work together to manage some of that and then evaluate the actual data that they get and say, this was either helpful or it wasn't, how can we tweak this or do it differently so that we're getting impact for our investment of time?
But even more so to your point, how do you do that when you're always in this cycle of... cycle of being reactionary and, and having to solve problems that are real because we have no budget? And you don't, you're not able to get to this point where you can create that work group?
Right. I think, you know, I think this helps the leadership team and remember what the real work is. Even though we do get sort of side swiped by the daily, you know, sort of overwhelming nature of being an administrator in a smaller district because there are so many other things going on, like I have to apologize, I'm the webmaster now. So that's why the web, the website is a little bit delayed because I had to learn a whole new system and, but we'll talk about that in a minute. But those are unfortunately some of the real consequences of not having, you know, a breadth of support services for folks. But I think this is a document that can help us stay focused on what is really good and what the real, what the work is moving the district forward. And I think if we can communicate this more clearly to the community, whether it's the finance committee or the select board or the PTO and, and the GAA, the more we can communicate it out, I think the more we will engender trust in the district and a commitment, reestablish the commitment that was here when we had enrollment of twelve hundred or eleven hundred. And to your point, people would see us as high functioning that we are, but they, the, the perception would align with what's going on. And right now the perception doesn't quite align with the good work that's happening in the district.
On the other hand, this becomes, in my view, this becomes even more important at times like this.
Agree? That's, that's why I'm stuck on this, that this is so vital and yet it feels, you know, you know, saying, how do we get to that next level given the constraints that we're in?
So I think as we move forward, there are red flags that, that pop up and we'll talk about them as they come up. But I think, you know, to have a strategic plan is important. But to have a strategy of implementation, I think, is equally important. So I think taking a look at this document, taking a look at the strategic plan and trying to come up with the strategic objectives that are measurable so that we can say, these are the things that we're gonna focus on. We can't focus on all of this. But we're gonna focus on these things because we think that they have the biggest impact for us as a school district and for Granby as a community. And that will, I think, take some discussion. So we'll talk about stage three, which is planning for all of that, which is really now through December. And, and putting that plan in place or that strategic plan, or, yeah, strategy, I should say. The strategies to move the district. So getting to that little red flag. In general, our students perform very well on standardized assessments. By tenth grade, the majority of students are passing MCAS with either proficient or advanced, outperforming the state averages, which is always pleasing. There is an area of concern in grades four and seven where we start to look at student growth percentiles and compare that. What a student growth percentile is, is basically if a student scores at a certain level, they get grouped with other students throughout the Commonwealth that scored at the same level and then they compare them and how they score the next year. And, and they create a student growth percentile. And so Okay, so, I'm a fourth grader, I'm a third grader and I take MCAS and I score two forty, which is proficient. I get grouped with a whole bunch of other students throughout the Commonwealth that also scored two forty. And the state then calculates, when the students, all of those students in that group take the MCAS the next year, they'd start to calculate which students grew at different rates. Okay, so now you're talking about, for me as an, as an educator, it's never enough to say someone's proficient or advanced. It's just not enough. I need to know, if I was advanced when I walked in the door, how much more advanced am I now? How much more have I grown as a student? And that might not be reflected in an MCAS score. But it can be reflected in a student growth percentile when you compare to other students that scored the same the year before. And so what we notice is that in fourth and seventh grade, that the growth percentiles fall below expectations.
It's interesting that fourth grade is when they switch schools and seventh grade is when they switch schools.
It's also when students in the past have had to write. So I think there's some thought that needs to be given to, well, we'll get into that, but what are we doing around writing and the expectations for writing for students? And the kinds of instructional activities that we're doing with students that perhaps they're not getting as rigorous assignments as they need to, to continue that growth when they score well at the beginning. Are we giving them enough rigorous assignments to keep them growing? Even though they're still proficient, they're not growing as much as they should be.
Well, I remember that was, that was an issue for a while when they were switching schools, making sure that there was,
Continuity.
Continuity in curriculum.
And the transition was, you know, was successfully made and what does that look like? And it seemed like there were some concerns in, in those school, school transitions from third to fourth, from sixth to seventh.
And the other thing you notice too, in looking at data in general, assessment data in general, there doesn't appear in Granby to be a lot of consistent data and a consistent assessment. So there isn't, in addition to MCAS or PARK, there isn't something like a map testing or a Galileo that would, you know, you'd give students throughout the school year to monitor growth and learning over the school year. There's, through the educator evaluation system, the creation of common assessments has been done. But the system to analyze that and to track students, that's where I think things have not been developed as fully as they could be. To your point, to really measure how students are growing. I think there's pockets of it. There are some teachers that it's sort of like a, something that they really enjoy so they go, they go ahead and do it, but it's not systemic. It's not K through twelve. We have a clear understanding of that. Now, Dr. Hool had started some of that work and had used some Title I funding to work with B, K, L visions, but that just houses the data. We almost need to take a step back and say, what data do we even have? And how consistent is it? How reliable is it? How valid is it? And what are we using it for? So that's a red flag for me.
What is not clear to me is, we, we do have data. You know, we, we collected one way or another. Whether it's related to what we do here, you can go to Desi's site and download a lot or we have other types of data collection mechanisms and we do that. Sometimes annually, sometimes, you know, a little less frequently than that. But I don't, I don't know that we have a robust, and this is not just us, in education overall, like robust, uh, problem solving process. We don't really get to the root cause of problems. So the four and seven, as Diane was saying, we heard that a couple of years ago. There was, you know, there was great interest in finding a way, the continuity concept came, came up. If it's still an issue, that means we did not really address the root cause. There is something else there that we thought we addressed and we did not. And that is the type of activity to me that differentiates any organization from the other. Are we really understanding what are the things that are bogging us down, keeping us from improving? And then we find the root causes and we make changes and go. So with that, if it is, if, I'm just saying this from my personal perspective because, you know, uh, uh, it seems interesting that we're seeing these things. But as we solve problems and make changes, what we call, you know, improvement to the way we do things, process, that also means change. And change management is another thing that is really missing from almost everything that we do and this is not just Granby, this is again, overall education. We are trying to institute a lot of changes, but it's almost in a rush. Just, you know, let's react to this, let's react to that. And the management of the change process is not there. And everybody, you know, is dumbfounded when things, uh, changed. You can't even explain it to your audience, whether it's your town community or the school community. Just we don't really have a good way of communicating that. Again, we can differentiate ourselves if we can find a better way of doing that. And so strategic plan for strategic plan sake, yeah, we can have a document. But how do we really articulate a good problem that we want to address?
Right.
And at the end, we solve it and we measure it so we can share that information with everybody. I think that's gonna be important for us.
Exactly. I agree, absolutely. So some strengths that we do have, we do have interventions through Title I in math and reading. But again, we do struggle with consistent assessments in place. I think one of the things that Granby struggles with because it is a small district is there may only be one teacher at the middle school level or the high school level teaching the course. And so there isn't a lot of collaboration, you know, that can happen. There's not a lot of discussion that can happen. So that's something I think that is an opportunity for further inquiry. How do we help staff work together to collaborate and look at data? Maybe in a whole school manner so that people are understanding, you know, to your point, Emery, here's the problem of practice, you know, here's what the data is telling me about my students and these are the strategies that I'm gonna use this year to make, see some improvement. As a result, I hope to see, you know, so many more of these kids score well on my summit of assessment that I give them. But it's hard when you're one teacher teaching it. So how do we set up the time and, and the expectation and the support so that teachers feel like they can have that conversation with a colleague? Because that's when powerful change in instruction happens. When people open up their doors and don't feel like they're teaching in isolation and that they can say, I'm having a real problem of practice. You know, even if it's social emotional, not connecting with kids, you know, I'm not connecting with this, these kids. Help me understand that. And being open to that discussion is important.
Is there anything like communities of practice for, uh, teachers?
Yes, so in education, we call it professional learning communities. And one of the things that, that you will be seeing as we move forward is, I hope with, with some of the grant funding that comes, is the idea of creating exactly that with teacher leaders and instructional leadership teams. And so that these are the people that would work together to establish exactly that. Maybe there are two or three communities of practice that are going to address a certain issue and that is their goal.
This is within Granby? And that's great?
And there's also when we go to CES, it, you know,
I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
Broader, broader school district.
Resources that we do.
Yeah, because when you say, you know, absolutely, you know, you're right. Just if there's only one teacher, then, you know, how do we really, uh, how can we do all these things?
I think a good example of that are the folks in the history department that go to attend the teaching, history in ourselves in our schools. I didn't get the title right. But anybody who goes to that professional development offered through the collaborative for educational services comes back totally inspired around things like using primary source documents, getting kids to actually do constitutional conventions in the classroom. All of these very innovative, again, communities of practice where people get together outside Granby and work together to solve some of the problems of practice that they're seeing and, and really create rigorous and differentiated instructional opportunities for their students. And that's what you'd hope to see as administrators or teachers visiting each other's classrooms, some of these types of instructional strategies being used. So one of the things that is a bit of a red flag, although we're, we're working on it currently, is that there was no district curriculum accommodation plan. That's called a D cap. And what that does is it defines accommodations that any student could use. Student wouldn't necessarily have to be on an IEP or have a 504. These are accommodations that are available to all students. And so for example, it may be that the school decides that all students should be available to have retakes of exams so that they're demonstrating mastery and not, not just being able to pass a test the first time. So those are being discussed as we speak and implemented K through twelve.
So that, that will be in place when?
Well, at the junior senior high school, I think with Mr. Sullivan. It's hopeful that by fall it would be confirmed. And then I know that the elementary school is looking at the high school D cap because again, Granby is, is, is small, so we'd like to have just one. So that there may be an elementary section and a secondary section, but it would be one document. So as, as we have professional development, I think it's important for teachers to see what's available throughout the district so we don't get pigeonholed. One of the things I think that the district should consider and is an opportunity for the inquiry is writing. Do we have shared expectations for writing at each grade level? Do we have things like anchor papers? Do students know and understand the expectations for writing and writing outcomes? Does a fourth grade teacher know what a third grade teacher is doing in terms of writing? And so that there is growth throughout the curriculum and, and writing in particular. I think it's important, again, to your point, we just don't do to do. But how have our common assessments affected instruction in the classroom? And if it hasn't affected instruction in the classroom, then why? Because I think a lot of time went into creating common assessments, but then there doesn't seem to be traction in the classroom for instructional change.
So that tells me that we have to question the standard. You know, we have to take a look at it rather than assuming that somebody isn't doing it for some reason. We have to take a look at, is, is this an accurate standard to be using? You know, I, I have a bugaboo about, you know, the state sending down all of these wonderful ideas for standardization and implementation and this and that.
Right.
You know, but
Right.
they bought some product from somebody who, you know, some company. You know, we need to do what's right for our district.
Correct, yep. And I think there's, again, to Emery's point, there's been a lot of doing and there's been a lot of change. But I think teachers are feeling, I've heard this, just overwhelmed by it all and just trying to sift through it all and what's really most important. Again, what's most important in Granby are the relationships that teachers build with kids. And then second to that is how are those relationships being used to support the learning? And is the learning rigorous and, and pointing kids in the right direction? Are stu-, are students learning and therefore feeling successful? Do they feel competent and confident? Are they encouraged? Are they passionate about what they're doing? Or are they simply complying? Are teachers simply complying? Are they feeling passionate about their work? Are they engaged? Are they motivated? And I think that's important and I think it's something that we need to talk about.
And again, there, there's only, only so many hours in the day. So when you're such a small district, it's very hard to do all of the work of teaching children and then do all the other stuff.
And then, yeah, exactly.
And then look at data, I mean.
Yep. So I think one thing is, again, I think to Mike's point, how do we, how can the district celebrate the learning of all students to the larger community on a more regular basis? And just really, you know, despite the successes of our Granby students, whether it's on the athletic field, earning, earning scholarships for academics or athletics or, or volunteer and service work, the kinds of colleges and universities our kids get into. Despite all of that, there's a perception that the instructional and co-curricular programming is better in larger neighboring districts. And we need to get at that. Because I don't believe it to be true. I think that Granby has a tremendous amount to offer and students are extremely successful. And Granby students should see Granby as the best choice for themselves.
I think we've been asking that question as a committee now for four years. And I don't feel, honestly, I don't feel like I'm any closer to the root
Me neither.
causes than I was when I got on this committee.
It's financial.
Well, I
It is.
People, people see People, people see, people, people equate dollars with quality. And that isn't always true, right? I've owned Cadillacs, you know, the biggest pieces of garbage you could own. It doesn't, something shiny and lovely to look at doesn't necessarily mean it's quality or good or even valuable. It's just, it's just what it is. They, 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 you, you see a larger district that has more kids going to it. It feels more popular or it feels safer because look at all these other kids going there. These kids are all successful. Look at this town. Look at these houses, these people send. People make these assumptions and they look at, you know, our older buildings and they make judgment calls on them. Is it fair or right? Nope. But that's the perception.
I didn't make that assumption moving into this town. I knew exactly what I was moving into. I chose to move into this town. I didn't grow up in this town. I knew that it was a small rural town. The buildings weren't shiny, the people weren't driving around in Cadillacs. And I still chose to come to this town and put my kids in the school system.
Yeah, I, and I.
So I don't, I don't think it's as, I just don't think it's black and white. I think there's, I don't know the answer. I, it's just, it's just a thought. I don't know what the answer is. I just think it goes a little bit deeper.
Mm-hmm. And those of us who are lucky enough to have our kids go to these schools or still or have graduated, you know, we know that truth. We, you know, you investigate those things, not, but not everybody does.
Right.
A lot of people just drive through, they pull up in front of an open house, this looks great. Yeah, those schools look awesome. And then they buy.
But there's, there, there is, there is truth in the fact that dollars sometimes get you more, right? Uh, so, you know, if you want to study some languages, then you need more teachers to teach those languages. If you want to do, uh, I don't know, uh, some technology, you need to have the dollars to spend on the technology. So I don't want to really, uh, underestimate the importance of having the right resources for it.
Mm-hmm.
All that said, it goes back to our, uh, conversation uh, that we've been having for a while now. How do we really communicate the success? Uh, it goes back to what Mike just said. So what you said, everything that you said is correct. I mean, if a, if a student really expects an academic, uh, fulfillment, uh, taking certain classes, uh, taking certain electives, being able to part of, uh, I don't know, some extracurriculars, athletics, this and that. You can probably find almost everything here. There will be some exceptions, but we always look into opportunities if there is a lot of demand for that. But the connection between what those expectations and wants are and what the outcome of what, uh, students get in, uh, in Granby, uh, is, that, that is not connected. So when that connection is not obvious, we keep on having these nice conversations, saying that Granby is great and, you know, it's a beautiful place. Our kids went through this, uh, great, uh, school district. But it's, it's narrative. We have to have the right evidence to show that, hey, we have this leads to this. We have that leads to that.
Mm-hmm.
Then you can compare it to any other district. And if you are looking for something beyond that, you know, fine, that's, that's good. Uh, you know, we, we, we can't do anything about that. But if we are losing interest in this district or folks are losing interest in this district for stuff that we are not able to articulate, that's a problem. Cause we're not really making the connection that, hey, we, we are offering these and it leads to this. And that's, that's a challenge that we're having.
So, so a couple of things, right, just from my perspective, to what you were just saying. You need to be able to show the measurements, show the percentages, just like you did in that, that other section. What was it? So, like, whatever the percentages were of the kids that were, were doing AP coursework.
Mm-hmm.
The, the computer class, right? But then, but then there's another problem that you have to figure out and that's the, the perception of the commitment from the town, right?
Yeah.
People are bailing out because they're afraid in three or four years, there's gonna be nothing here and they're gonna try to get their kids set up in another district now. Right?
Yep.
No, you're absolutely right.
So, we're gonna talk about that, I think in the next, not this next section, but coming up under the budget and finance section, enrollment and all, all what we've learned about enrollment and why people may be leaving. Um, so for student support, um, I think it's phenomenal that, um, we have so many teachers that are, um, trained in highly specialized instruction such as Orton Gillingham and the Benchmark Reading Programs. Um, that is thanks to, um, prior superintendents, uh, who have put that professional development in place and an expectation, I think, knowing that Granby is the size it is, that the more, um, specialized instruction our teachers have and the more certifications they have in those, uh, the more we can support students in Granby. Um, there are additional programs to consider, reading recovery and Read Naturally, um, that the district may want to consider um, moving forward. Um, the district is well-staffed with related service providers. Um, as you know, we share a BCBA, um, so we're branching out into shared services with our neighbors, uh, which allows our, our Granby students to receive high-quality instruction. Um, we have, uh, reinvigorated, I think, the Special Education Parent Advisory or, or the PAC. Um, and we've had several professional development opportunities, um, both by consultants, but also, um, run by our own staff. Um, and those have been well-received by our families. Um, with the, uh, new pupil services director and the special education team leader, uh, we've established RTI, which is, um, a tiered system of support, which identifies students prior to, um, moving into special education. If there are supports we can provide students like smaller class size, um, intervention and tutoring in classrooms and reading and math so that students may, um, show more growth and therefore not need, um, more intensive services um, and can be supported through RTI. Um, but also if a student does, um, move forward through the tiered intervention system and does need, um, support, we've exhausted everything that we have, um, so that the student truly does need a specialized instruction. Um, and I, I hope that we have solved this, but, uh, the Pupil Services, um, Department has experienced a turnover in administration um, during the past several years. Mrs. Hepworth is the seventh director in as many years. Um, the chronic turnover in leadership has left the department with inconsistent program development implementation, a lack of vision for pupil services, inconsistent expectations for staff and instruction, and inconsistent communication with families regarding program offerings. In addition, our compliance or our timelines for special education, um, are a concern and have been reflected in our coordinated program review. Um, and so now we hope that with a strong, uh, leadership team and the commitment of the team that those, um, are things that will start to turn, uh, the perception of the community that, um, that here are the programs that we offer, the staff are well-informed of the expectations, and this is the instructional program that we have for all of our students, including our special education students. Um, in HR, I think this is where we start to get into, um, some of our red flags, um, frankly. Um, we, like most, um, districts in Western Massachusetts, um, for general education positions, um, English, an elementary classroom teacher, we will receive up to two hundred applicants. So we are still very attractive as a school district. Um, and like many s- districts in Western Massachusetts, we still struggle to, um, attract, uh, very specialized instructors like chemistry or physics. I mean, in Granby, we have a dual WAMU because we really need someone who's dual certified in chemistry and physics. Um, so we have staff who've gone on and gotten professional development and gotten licensure, so a big thank you to them uh, who do, uh, go above and beyond in, in, um, applying for and earning additional licensure um, and taking the learning that's required to do so. Um, it's not uncommon in Western Massachusetts to have difficulty finding those. Um. I think a celebration for the school district is, uh, work that we've done this year in implementing a professional development workshop model for our staff that allows them to earn their fifteen PDPs in special education or English language learner, learning. Um, and that's done in-house and our teachers can apply, uh, to present that workshop. And so we've had two teachers come forward to do both the special education and the ELL. And those have been fully enrolled and so our teachers are taking part of that. Um, and that's a real celebration. I did hear, um, early on that professional development has taken many forms. Again, you've had some turnover in the superintendency, so professional development, um, has had different, um, philosophical underpinnings to it. Um, the result is that, what I heard, is that teachers didn't feel like their voice was at the table in deciding what professional development was gonna be most impactful for classrooms. Um, so you see sort of, um, as you walk through classrooms, some teachers doing some parts of some professional development that have happened, um, and not a real school-wide, uh, focus on, um, best practices and what you would see in classrooms. So, um, I think that's something to pay attention to as we move forward with strategy um, for that. Um, and there has not been a year-long professional development calendar and that was noted in the coordinated program review. Um, there is time scheduled for teachers to collaborate. Um, but again, with sort of a changing leadership landscape, um, the expectation has been inconsistent and the oversight has been inconsistent. And so because there's not a common expectation of making sure that what we're doing and collaborating makes a difference for instruction and therefore makes a difference in student achievement and we're not measuring that, it's a little bit all over the place. So, um, I think that's something to pay attention to. Um, and then finally, the difficult financial situation in terms of HR management. Um, it has affect- affected last year and this year, our teacher retention. Um, we are starting to see, as I mentioned, students, uh, students, teachers making the decision that I've been riffed, this is the third or fourth year I have been riffed and, um, I'm going to heed the call of other districts that, um, are recruiting me um, and go to a more stable, um, financial, um, picture for myself and my family. Um. Uh, let's see. Um, so again, I think opportunities for the, further inquiry are how does this district continue to attract engaged and highly qualified teachers in light of recent staffing reductions? Again, you don't want the perception to get out there that, you know, don't go to Granby because you don't know if you'll have a job. Um, you know, um, that can certainly happen. Um, how does the district analyze and shift resources toward new programming for students? So are we able to be flexible, um, uh, retrain staff to offer different types of programming based on student need? Um, how does the district create systems to support collaborative approaches to developing and implementing effective professional development programs? And then how do we celebrate the hard work of our dedicated staff to rebuild culture and climate? So I don't know if there's any questions on that or thoughts.
So you said that this was an area where we run into some red flags.
Yeah.
What is, what we, what would you say the biggest red flag would be in this area?
I think the idea that professional development, that teachers don't have a voice in that, um, which really in my mind is a bigger issue around teacher empowerment. Um, and if, um, we're seeing traditional approaches in classrooms, uh, um, a direct instruction for a majority of the class or a majority of instruction is a lecture and note-taking. And if that's what we're seeing, it can be directly related to teachers not being involved in identifying problems of practice and ha- having a collaborative approach to professional development so that they are changing practice. Um, because at the end of the day, you can do all the professional development you want and if there's not a change in practice and a change in student achievement, then here's a resource that you spent a lot of money on but hasn't really shown any impact in, in school or in students, in classrooms. And I also think it sets a tone and tenor for the culture and climate that you want, um, in an empowered district so that teachers are involved at a very gr- you know, grassroots, ground level in identifying what the problems of practice are and having the system in place so that their voices are heard, um, as we move forward.
Yeah. And I agree with that. I, you know, pe- i- in continuous improvement, you do in, you do improve when people who do the work and who know the work are involved in, in that process. And maybe that's, it's, it's my ignorance, but I'm not really sure that across the state, there is a good model for, for that. I mean, it's not, again, it's not just a Granby thing.
No, it's not.
We are, this, this is a highly siloed, um, environment, education. Everybody has a different perspective, everybody is in there, and when it comes to really collaboration and understanding and empowering, we don't really, we don't really even get there. We just, you know, we, because everybody's, everybody's on their own side of the turf and everybody's looking at it from their side. And how do we really come together?
If I don't open my door, I don't have to change.
Right.
And so then you get back to change management. How do we manage the stress of, we're gonna ask you to consider things a little differently. We're gonna ask you to collaborate. We're gonna ask you to maybe share students. We're gonna ask you maybe to be on a similar schedule so that we can share resources, like all of that. You know, when it comes from empowered teachers, understanding the problems, then, you know, a lot of our change management becomes, um, easier to manage.
You also might find more empowered teachers if teachers didn't feel so mandated to.
Correct. And so what can, yeah, leaders do to say?
We can underscore that enough.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, when I worked in an agency setting, it was every week, every week, almost weekly, there was a new mandate coming down from the state
Mm-hmm.
that just gave us more paperwork to do and it made no sense.
Mm-hmm.
It made no sense. At the end of the day, it was, all they want us to do is dot our i's and cross our t's. So when you're, when you're an intelligent person and you're looking at a document and you don't understand why you're utilizing this document,
Mm-hmm.
how do you become empowered, ener- energized, motivated? Um.
Takes the passion right out of it.
Yeah, I think, I think we, you know, we need to, you know, we need to consider that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Now, yes, we have to have data. We need to measure success. Question the current success, I mean, the current, um, standards that are used.
Right.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, you know, uh, going back to the budget conversations, that's not helping either. I mean, if, if you're in a, in a place where your job seems almost seasonal, where, you know, there is a known furlough process, you just, you know, you leave and then you come back. If you're going through that, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speculate that it is exactly the same, but in many environments, when there is, there is a lack of security.
And control.
And control.
You don't feel you have control over your own destiny in a lot of ways.
Then we tend to be siloed. And then we tend to, you know, protect what we have. And exactly, just hold things close to ourselves. And that, that is not really helpful because then we can't communicate. But that, those are all the different factors that are affecting. So it's not really, you know, in, in my, in my day-to-day work, I always repeat that it's not the people, it's the process. But we created such a process that it is alienating people, making people go to their own corners and, uh, see more benefit in being in their own corners than being part of, uh, uh, collaboration or, uh, conversation. We have to change that. And again, this we is not just Granby.
Correct.
The, the, this entire, I mean, your example of mandates. Oh, really? I, I did not hear any, anybody who is involved in a, a school district. In fact, even those folks who slightly understand what schools need to do, say, oh, great, there are mandates. We should all, we should, you know, we should be thankful that there are so many mandates coming our way. I mean, even if it's not financial, uh, for financial reasons, even for autonomy reasons, enjoying your, your job, your work reasons, uh, those, those mandates which have no, many of them, ha- you know, have no, uh, solid thinking behind them because somebody thought, hey, you know, it would be good because they heard it or they thought about it or somebody else is doing it. We have to be a lot more thoughtful in putting this structure together. But when the top structure is not, is not allowing us to do that, it's, it's really trickling down to us.
Well, and I think, you know, ed evaluation is probably, educator evaluation is probably a good example of that because, you know, certainly educator evalu- because, you know, certainly educator evaluation could be seen as a hammer. You know, I'm gonna evaluate you, I'm gonna give you a summit of evaluation and if it's poor, you know, that's gonna go in your record and then, you know, all of these bad things are gonna happen. But if you work in empowered district where teacher evaluation, educator evaluation is about support and about actually sharing your problem of practice so that your administrator can provide support to you and you can set a goal that's measurable and if I don't meet that goal, that's okay, but here are the steps I took. This is how I grew as an educator, this is how my instruction changed, then that's a different understanding of educator evaluation. And when you talk to some of the educator evaluation folks at DESI or ESI, that's what they wanted. Their, their intent was to create a system that supported growth in teachers. And in a lot of places, it became a hammer. Um, and so, you know.
In a lot of places, you know, from my understanding of it, all, it's, it's just getting through the process.
It's a checklist.
There's no quality to it.
Right.
It's, ugh, I gotta, you know, oh, it's my, it's my time to do this and
Mm-huh. Yep.
you know, the assistant principal comes in or however it's done, it's just, okay, now I can check this off the list. I mean, how is that helpful to anybody?
Yep.
So, so where does Granby stand on empowerment, like, like with empowering the teachers on a, on a scale of things? Is it, is it low, is it medium, is it high?
I don't know, it's a good question. I, I would have to ask them directly, I think. Um, I didn't ask them, you know, do you feel empowered? Um, I think in general, uh, there has been um some trust issues uh with leadership and whether people felt that if they gave a suggestion or, or shared a problem of practice, that that would either be listened to or wouldn't be sort of held against them, so to speak. Um, so I do think that there's some of that to overcome. I mean, I've heard that from, from teachers. Um, I've heard, you know, if, if teachers are gonna be empowered, they need to see their leaders in their classrooms. Um, and I think that wasn't always the case. And I mean, just walking through and talking to kids and talking to staff and talking to paraprofessionals and, you know, having their ears on the ground. Um, and uh, my understanding from what I've heard is that that hasn't always been the case. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know what teachers would say about technically, do they feel empowered? Do they feel like we're moving in a better direction? Um, I hope, I hope they do, um, but that is a goal, I think, that the leadership team has in terms of, you know, I think we have, um, right now, we have very experienced administrators who um have a strong sense of uh how to lead the instructional program, not just manage a building. And so doing that collaboratively, getting teachers to talk about, you know, uh, practice and problems of practice and helping them with that, encouraging them for their growth so that they maintain a freshness, a willingness to engage with kids, a motivation, a commitment, a sense of fun and spirit that has, I think, you know, to your point, it's been taken away because of all of the things that we have to do.
Mm-huh.
So I think the answer to the second part of the question is, are we now taking steps to make sure they, they, they at least feel more empowered?
Yeah, I think so, yep. Mm-huh.
Okay.
I would say that the, the fact that we don't know tells me that, uh, that they don't, they are not.
We don't know yet.
I, I, I agree.
Yeah.
I think they're tentative, you know, I think we're all tentative, you know, it's a new administration, it's only been a year.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a lot of, if I really can say that, is that gonna be okay?
But empowerment is not, empowerment is not something that is one-sided, like, you know, just something is happening somewhere and we don't know.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
It's a, it's a mutual thing. We create the environment for it and then you expect that it's gonna happen.
Right. A culture and a climate, yep, exactly.
Exactly, the culture is gonna shift. The fact that we don't know, that means we did not either have the conversation,
Yeah. Right.
cannot really tell, so that I will take the best bet and, or easiest bet and say that, no, the answer is no, and how do we really make it better?
It's. Right. Well, and I think when we talk about strategies and how do we measure that, if, you know, you know, i- it's a good example, superintendent, new superintendent sends out an email and nobody answers. Like, what? What do you mean, nobody answers? You know, and so I just think learning about each other and learning about how we communicate and I think those are all, you know, long-term goals that we, we can have to, to move us forward. So, um, finance and budget operations, um, this took a tremendous amount.
Wah, wah, wah.
Wah, wah, wah. This took a tremendous amount of time this year. We learned a lot. Um, I don't think we've solved an awful lot, but um, there's nothing here that we haven't been discussing in terms of declining enrollment, increased school choice, um, families deciding uh that there's other opportunities that are better than Granby, um, less school choice in, um, perhaps a failure of administration to pay attention to recruitment um, and following up with families to, uh, to encourage school choice in. I think a red flag for us, um, that I haven't figured out yet is, is the private school issue. And we'll just call a spade a spade. Um, with McDuffie, um, fifty-one students out of Granby public schools is an awful lot of students.
Yep.
And so, um, to hear it continued, that we are continuing to be in competition with a private school that um continues to aggressively use tuition incentives with our Granby students, um, that it seems to be a convenience, um, I think we need to have probably a sit-down. Um, uh, because that's half, almost half a million dollars. And um certainly, um, I think Granby, uh, the public school system, um, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I think it's a red flag and we, we should probably spend some time and attention on that. And, and working with, with our partner, um, to either leverage and create a better partnership and a better relationship, but also to understand what the plan is moving forward because this is not sustainable for Granby.
This is not a partnership, first of all.
No.
Right.
This was never a partnership and we've questioned this every time we had to sign off on this new partnership every year.
Yep.
And we were scratching our heads and when we would ask questions, you know, it was, the state mandates this, you have to sign off on this.
How about, are we really taking that many students? I didn't think it was the last.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I, I, I feel a little, I, I feel a little duped, you know, the first year. But the, you know, the, the next two years, I, I, I feel as though, I don't know. Fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on, shame on me.
But at the end of the day, there isn't really, uh, there isn't, my understanding is that there isn't really a way to stop uh, private school from, from, you know, running their business the way they, they want to run it.
Correct.
But I, I will take people, uh, at their word. Uh, and when I had some conversations with folks who selected to go to, uh, to McDuffie's, they actually shared with me some of the concerns that you already mentioned. It wasn't necessarily the, the tuition, obviously, that made it a lot sweeter and a lot easier. But, you know, the uncertainty or whether or not we had certain things that they wanted to have for their children. Again, it goes to that communication, us saying this thing over and over, you know, at a meeting, that's good. But how do we really make it small and understandable and continuously share it with the community? So they understand what's here and what may not be here. Then they make that educated decision, as opposed to thinking that, hey, you know, I really don't know what's here, there's a lot of uncertainty and these folks are offering me a lot of incentives, let me just go there because there's a stage, there is a club, there is a lab or something like that, you know?
Right.
It, it, it makes it, it makes it a difficult, uh, difficult thing for us to mitigate because we're not really doing the best job in communicating what is really great in our school district either.
Right. Mm-huh.
I mean, to be very honest, right?
Or, or the fact that, um, teaching, the teaching profession is, the requirements are very different in a private school setting than in a public school setting, right? We're requiring masters-level teachers.
Yep. Mm-huh.
Um, and that's not the case in, in private school settings, right?
Yeah, that is true.
I think schools don't have to educate every child in every classroom, and public schools do.
Yes.
It's, so again, it's that perception.
That is actually, that is, that is a huge thing, that's actually, yeah.
Somehow, somehow in a private school, you're getting a better education.
If your child has. Yeah. If, if you don't have a perfectly neurotypical child and you send that child into a private school, good luck.
Right.
True, that is true.
Good luck, 'cause there will be nobody there to advocate for your child.
Yeah.
To make sure they have the services they need.
And the IEP doesn't apply.
No IEP, no IEP, I mean, there's just, there's just nothing there.
So again, the system created something that is not, that is not balanced, that is not equal or equitable.
Mm-huh.
Just, you know, everybody is subject to different rules and, you know, going back to your mandate there. You know, we're, we're talking about mandates and some folks don't even know what a mandate is. I'm just, you know, being facetious all of it, but they don't real, they're not subject to those mandates.
No. And again, I think opportunities for further inquiry, you know, i- when you, when you listen to families who may come back from a private school experience and, and re-enroll in the, in the public schools, whether it's Granby or another public school district, um, you know, the stories they're telling about exactly that, the kinds of supports that their child needs that don't exist. Or the fact that they thought it was gonna be better, but it's really not. The, the quality of instruction is, is superb in the public schools. Um, and I think we bump up against a larger philosophical, you know, discussion of, um, what, what the perception has been in terms of, um, the poor quality of education in public schools in the United States of America, and that just simply isn't true. Um, and so, but we bump up against it.
Yes, but the, the difference is, the difference is that we don't have the funding for a marketing campaign
Correct.
to, to get that information out. And you look at any, any for-profit company and where's the biggest budget? It's in marketing and advertising.
Right.
But, but you're gonna have.
And that's the reality of it. We're in a situation now that's part of this vicious cycle that, you know, we're this great kept secret.
Mm-huh. So, opportunities for further inquiry, how does the school community reinvigorate the image of Granby public schools as the best choice for families? I think that is one of the things that we really do need to face in terms of, um, the, the budget ramifications of the perception that it's better somewhere else. And how can the school district address declining enrollment and enrollment projections? And how can the school committee and school district work effectively to inform the select board and finance committee of the unique and changing financial needs of the district? And I think that i- in more detail really is about the budget process. And as you've discussed publicly here, um, the idea that, that we are backed into a budget of minimum net school spending plus an override that happened a decade ago and that does in no way reflect the changing needs of students nor the changing needs of the district. Um, and that, that is, uh, an area and a huge red flag in terms of how, how the town perceives us working together with the, um, uh, town board and select, so that the finance committee and the select board to really, uh, be transparent about what our needs are. Um, and then finally, uh, family and community.
Sure, I'm sorry, Mike, did you have anything to say?
Well, it was just a, it was just a statement, or what, what, well, I guess, may, maybe it was a question, do we have the measurements or the ways to measure? And I remember hearing earlier in the report that we probably don't or it's not consistent.
Right.
Maybe one of the better ways to go against the McDuffie's and the private schools is with the measurements of the successes of the Granby students, whether they're still here in the program or they've just recently graduated and gone on to college, right?
Right. Yep.
And then put that up against what, what their statistics are.
Mm-huh.
And then to your point, the higher quality of the people that we're hiring, or at least the requirements versus their requirements, you kind of put that package together, right?
That could be part of our marketing campaign.
Yeah, we just need a marketing department, right?
For that marketing person that we're gonna hire. I think a lot of it goes back to the, the.
See, you say stuff like that, it's gonna come back to us, right?
I know.
It's a marketing person.
That's the only thing somebody's gonna hear, right, is that we're hiring a mar- we're not hiring a marketing person.
We wish we were.
But it comes back to, I think, the conversations and the relationships that, that, that principals build with families, that teachers build with families, that, that somehow in the past, you know, few years, that has gotten away from us. Um, and that I think rededicating ourselves as, as a system to that relationship with families, um, is going to be important. Um, just like no child, um, no child is left behind.
Left behind.
Um, no family should leave without having a conversation, a long conversation, um, about how we can mitigate whatever concerns there are. Um, I feel like sometimes people are leaving in the middle of the night. Um, and I certainly understand why families leave, but I, I would like to have that long conversation with someone to, to say, these are the great things that happen. We know these great things are happening and we need you to stay so that these things can continue, not only for your child, but for all of Granby because the schools are the center of the community. And as that starts to get chipped away, you're seeing what you're seeing.
But that, I, I think you make a good point. I don't think families are leaving in the middle of the night. I think that's, we've gotta catch them. I don't think we're doing a good enough job catching them ten steps back.
Right, right. So a situation happened, it wasn't addressed, it gets, yeah.
I think that to me is a red flag. Exactly. And then four other situations happen. It's not, you know, that's, that's what I was talking about before. I don't think that we've gotten to all the root causes.
Mm-huh, right.
I don't think it's as black as black and white.
True.
Because we have, we've come at it from all angles.
Well, we've even heard where a parent has a perception that all of their child's friends are leaving.
Right.
When we haven't heard anything about those kids leaving.
Right.
And so all of a sudden, two families leave because they thought four other families were leaving when they weren't.
Mm-huh.
So, I mean, it's, it's just hard to catch every single, you're right, it's not black and white, it's.
And to understand the root cause, so, you know, you have two families that encounter a very similar situation and one makes the decision to stay and one makes the decision to go. I think, you know, understanding the decision-making of families is, is important.
And also, that goes back to your point of consistency. Maybe there's a similar situation and one was handled one way and another was handled in a very different way. You know, we, we, we do need to be consistent, um, and that's where these, you know, our policies are really important. Like what we did with the dual enroll, enrollment program.
Right. Mm-huh. Yep.
It took all of the informal conversations out of it and refer to the policy, refer to the policy.
Yep. Yep.
But it's not, it's not, I mean, uh, to be fair, it's not all lost. We still have a lot more students coming to our district than, uh, students leaving, at least on the public side, the school choice side.
Absolutely. Right. Mm-huh.
Private is different. Uh, that shows that some folks are still seeing the good things. Uh, whether it's relative speaking or in absolutes, but they are seeing things. Um, I was, I was, uh, uh, interviewing a family for student exchange, uh, the other day in a town nearby and I mentioned that I'm, you know, I live in Granby and I'm one of the school committees. The guy said, oh, you have, you have a great school. And I thought he was thinking about Granby, Connecticut, and that's what I always think about. Because usually people just tell me, I know Granby, and then they have no idea where Granby is, right?
They ask me that.
So I said, you're talking about Granby, Massachusetts, right? He said, yes. I said, what do you know? And he was, he was a sports guy.
Ah.
He wore, he actually volunteers for athletics in his school. And his big thing was, for a school, a small school like yours, you beat our team, uh, twice this year and, you know, that was a, almost a, almost a pain point for him, that, you know? And he, you know, he started with, with the athletics, but he said, you know, for a small school, I see, I see you guys do great things in your district. The challenge is, that guy doesn't live here.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? So what is, what is it that he sees that we are not able to show within our own town? That's what bothers me. That's why I'm saying that even though, I mean, we're trying, we're trying to do our best. We, the last so many years, we've been trying to be, and communicate. But there is obviously something missing that is causing some folks not to be well-informed or not informed in a way that will keep them, convince them to stay, uh, uh, here. So, you know, I, I agree with you. Just, we have to be ten steps
Correct.
uh, ahead as opposed to trying to understand after the whole thing happened and everybody committed to somewhere else.
Mm-huh. Agreed. So, that probably leads us, and thank you for the segue, right into family and community engagement. Um, and this actually, um, is an indicator that comes off of the superintendent, um, evaluation, um, rubric. Um, so in general, uh, the district uses a variety of means to communicate with families. Um, as you know, uh, we've increased our presence on social media. Um, the interim superintendent developed the digital backpack. Um, there was a little bit of pushback on that. Um, so, um, we've tandemed that with, um, some of the paper, uh, copies we listened. Um, and so there is some paper now being sent home to students. Um, the new website, um, will link to the parent portal, which was opened this year, uh, for students in seven through twelve, or nine through twelve, and will open for five through twelve in the coming year. Um, we are transitioning from the old site to the new site, uh, website, which will allow, uh, people on mobile devices to have better access. It'll also improve our compliance with ADA, uh, so that, um, stu, anyone with disabilities can access our site. Uh, we use Blackboard Connect, um, uh... I think, um, one of the celebrations, um, over the past few years has been, uh, the interim superintendent, Dr. Cool's establishment of two task forces. One, the emergency manu, management response, um, team that developed their protocol and also, uh, the social emotional learning, uh, group that identified needs of students in the community, uh, to support, uh, children. And then finally, I think, um, Granby is incredibly fortunate, as you just stated so eloquently, that as a small town, there are so many community-based organizations that support the public schools. From Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, community theater groups, um, Granby Athletic Association, PTO, Music Boosters, Children's First, local religious and civic organizations. Um, every one of those, um, organizations supports the public schools. And forgive me if I've left any out, um, because I'm, I'm, I'm sure I have. Um, on the one hand, it's a small town and we have all of these wonderful organizations. On the other hand, it's the same people in multiple organizations. So I think having, knowing that and working with our families so that we're not overburdening them with requests, um, it is a trick that we, uh, that, a balancing act that we need to consider. Um, but I think it is amazing that our community groups work with our school-based co-curricular service clubs such as Hope and Student Council and our National Honor Society. So I think Granby has a strong sense of service and community and is something that we should consider as a means to, um, encourage families, uh, to not only consider Granby because of the great relationships we have, but because service is such a big part of what we do here and our students are involved in helping out not only their peers, um, but also the broader, uh, Granby community and in fact, uh, beyond that as well. Uh, so how do we measure this and the effectiveness of our communication strategies? What is the best way to communicate to a larger Granby community and garner public, more public support for our schools, um, particularly around budget time? And then how does the school district bring together community organizations to support learning beyond the classroom? So then finally-
You mind if I add one more thing?
Yep.
Uh, a, and, and this is one of the many things that we can talk about when it comes to reaching out and communicating. Uh, obviously, we, you know, just like our school committee meetings, we ask everyone to come. Uh, doors always open and ask questions and be part of it. Um, the few meetings, we had many meetings, but the few meetings that I was at, uh, where parents were invited, there were only a few people.
Mm-hmm.
So, that happens. That tells me that there may be an opportunity for us to go to the parents as opposed to always waiting for someone to come here.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what those opportunities are. But, uh, you know, sometimes if one way doesn't work, we have to try some others. And, uh, it, 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 that may be one of the things that we did not really try before and we may want to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's part of our brainstorming probably when we do the retreat and, uh, see what we can do in that regard.
Did you ever consider open house or parents' night, being visible and available for conversations?
Uh, I, I think we talked about that, and that's again, just that requires parents to come to a location. Uh, maybe we can do, I don't know, we can do community picnic that is organized by the school committee. Just, you know, we can find a way.
In the most-
We, but we have to try different things. It's not just, you know, we're, coming into a building doesn't always work for folks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
There, there has to be some more interaction, it seems, and maybe we can find that way.
But what I'm presenting to you is the things that are well-attended at the schools after hours by parents and families with the open house.
Then we'll do it.
It would be parents' night. It would, field day, field day.
Field day.
And most schools have field day, is to be there, be visible. And yes, field day is during the day, it's a workday, I understand that. But parents' night, open house, I'm sure you're there because you, a lot of you have children involved in the concerts and, um, theater things. Um, just, you know, I mean, I'm not saying wear a sign, I'm a school committee member, talk to me, um, but-
That's not a bad idea.
I-
I think you were onto something here.
What's a color that everybody looks good in?
Red. T-shirt, t-shirts, t-shirts.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anytime we try and do something special alone, like just this one thing, for example, you know, like Mark always says, whenever we wanna get something, it's happened in town, it's always better to sort of a, a, attach yourself to a, an established event that's attended. 'Cause then people have to come back out for something else. It's a great, yeah.
Thank you, Robyn.
No problem, I've been in this town a long time.
Yeah.
Not to mention the schools.
So then finally, um, phase three, um, will be the planning part of, um, going through this process with you folks and, and community input and then working with the leadership team and teachers, um, to develop that, um, strategy really and to set the goals so that we are clearly aligned and we have some measurable outcomes, um, and that we share that and that as such, we're, we're showing and demonstrating progress. Um, and also, um, that we're transparent about the work that we're doing. And, um, I just have a little blurb about values, but we don't really have to go into that too much and, um...
So we're gonna use this entry plan along with our strategic plan for our retreat.
Right. Yep.
Okay. So these, the entry plan in essence is your observations after your first year as to what exists, what are the opportunities, so we can incorporate those in the overall strategic plan?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Right. Correct, and I think, you know, we're in a unique situation where there is a strategic plan, um, and it was, you know, done with the community. So I think this is an excellent opportunity to sort of check off a lot of the things that were accomplished because there were a lot of great things that were accomplished in the plan. Um, and then I think maybe realign them under strategies, you know? Um, and, um, so that we have, uh, not just a timeline of dates, but expectations and goals um, that not only the school committee agrees to and votes on, but then therefore the leadership team is in charge really of working, collaborating with teachers around these goals. And it's done because it's, it's from, you know, it has teacher voice in it, it has student voice in it, it has community voice in it. And then, and then we have, um, I think a clearer picture of, of what we're doing moving forward. And, and a lot of this, yes, you know, to your point about, well, how do you do it in a restricting, you know, fiscal environment? A lot of this really is about how we organize and think about the great things that are going on.
Mm-hmm.
And so there isn't a lot of fiscal impact or financial impact of this. Um, but it's about culture and climate, it's about, um-
Philosophy.
philosophy and, and setting tone and tenor, so, um... All right.
Thank you for that incredible amount of work.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
I bet you learned a lot.
Oh, it was great. It was, yep.
Any other questions for Cheryl?
Well, not tonight, for you.
I'm really glad it actually, so, and this is part of the new superintendent induction program. This, this is what we'll wrap up into also the evaluation of the superintendent, um, with goals and all of that. Um, but their timeline is really sort of like, if you're July one, you do this entry plan gathering and you're presenting somewhere around January or February. And it, remember, I'd been talking about it?
Yeah.
I'm so happy that it got delayed because of budget, because I learned so much about the community during budget that will impact the strategies moving forward. Um, and I think it would have been premature, um, to have a report of the findings when such a big part of, um, our both opportunity but struggle is around budget and finance, so...
That's true, true.
So...
Agreed.
All right.
So, thanks again.
My pleasure. Um, and do we just wanna take a quick look at the website?
Yes, we wanna, that's our last item tonight, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So I just would like to make people aware, first of all, I'd like to beg their forgiveness that I am the webmaster and I recognize that, um, it's taking me longer to learn the system than I ever thought. Um, and David is, um, finishing up all of his state reporting, so, um, without somebody taking on some of that work because we don't have that person, we're just behind. And there's just only so many hours of the day. Um, but we are moving forward with training principals, with training our, our librarian, media specialist here at the high school, um, getting information out to the athletic department, so I beg the community's forgiveness. Um, but there are, um, I do think that this will be, uh, uh, an easier platform for people to navigate once we do get all of the information up there and consistent. You will see here under the blog that the elementary school lists have been uploaded. Um, and that's where a lot of, um, new information will go. Um, and that will populate up to this section of the news. Um, and we're starting to make those links, um, as we speak. Um, the PDF of the calendar, um, is under the, uh, district, I believe, right? Info for families.
It's on a digital backpack.
It's on the digital backpack, sorry, yes.
Would it make sense to put a statement up there that, you know, we're under construction?
Forgive us, yes, again, yep.
Yeah. Just so people, you know, people might, if they go onto that website.
And I would say, I've gotten information from Emery about, um, this is what people are looking for that's not here. So the reading lists are next, those are going up hopefully tomorrow. Um, but for example, the supply lists. Got a lot of feedback that the supply lists were missing. So as you notice, um, under the, um, blog, the supply lists are back. Um, but they're just on the front page, they're not in the schools yet. So there's just, it's a lot more than I think we anticipated. Um, and the old site came down much quicker than we were anticipating. So we apologize for all of that, but if there are questions, just send them to the building principal as parents, as community members. I'd really like to see this up as soon as possible and we'll work hard at getting them up.
So-
But we are a work in progress, there's no doubt about it.
I will, I will do to you what I do to people at work. And I will ask you, what is, what is your ETA? What, when do we expect this to be up and running?
Um-
Because it's a big piece of our communication.
It is a big piece of our communication. So, um, tomorrow we have a leadership retreat, we have one more day of our leadership retreat. Um, and after that, I have a couple of days scheduled just, um, to update the webpage. So my hope is that, um, by Friday, most of the pertinent information that I'm hearing that people want is populated. Um, but if I don't know people want it, then I won't know to ask. So part of the other piece of this is that when the old site went down, a lot of the information went down with it and we lost access to it. So as people are saying, oh, I need the reading lists, I have to call the principals. They have to call people and say, what are the reading lists for seven through twelve, or ten, seven through twelve? That all has to get generated and sent to me and then uploaded. Because we don't, we're not yet at a place where the principals have been trained to upload the information. So that's why it's taking longer. Um, but if I don't know people want something, then I don't know to go get it.
Right.
Because it's not, I don't, I don't own a lot of this information to get it up quickly.
So-
You have a, um, a blurb on this new page that says, um, no questions are too small, please ask.
Yep.
Um, things like the calendar, can we make them a little easier to find?
Yep.
Because the, I, I found it on the digital backpack because I was looking everywhere. But I think digital backpack was supposed to be things that we, at the time at least, we were not sending home.
Yeah. We talked about that, yep.
Yeah, it was. So we can, you know, if we can take that out. The last thing that I have is this. Is there any way for us or someone else to, to help with this?
Students?
It could be students, because we have a lot of people who actually have some experience in this.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind volunteering my time to the extent that, you know, I, I, I can help.
Yeah, I was gonna say too.
Yeah. Let me talk-
What about, um, community service hours for students?
Right. I think, so, once the principals are trained, I think then we'll start to see, um, community service either at the junior, senior high school or the media specialists that had owned this before.
Yeah.
So you'll see the information coming up more quickly.
Okay.
Yep.
Because ju, you know, I, I'm talking about just to get it up and running.
Yep.
If you need any, or anybody needs any help. I don't know what you're doing. Are you coding anything? Is, I don't know what-
No.
No, the, the, the coding is, 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 is there, it's just a matter of uploading content, documentingizing.
Okay.
I think that's where I struggle when I say, you know, when you say, can somebody help? Yeah, if I had the information ready. And I think that's part of the struggle is that we're, we're trying to get the information from teachers who are on vacation or on summer break, or we're trying to, you know, you know, I think that the, um, I, oops, it's down here. Um, you know, this is just a good example. The elementary school supply lists had to come from each of the grade levels.
Yeah.
You know, and then we're, you know, restructured so that they're consistent. Um, you know, it's just-
Would you mind going back, um, if you go to monthly calendar?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think I sent you something.
Yes.
I just, I wanna show it since we're here.
This is- Yep.
I don't know how the calendar works really, but, uh, if you find something, uh, next month in August, something with, let, let's take that one.
Yep.
So it's school something, right? I don't know what it is.
Right.
When you click on it, it doesn't show what the title of the meeting is, title of the event is. So if there's a way to really go, go around that, that would be great.
Okay. Yep.
Either, you know, when the box appears or, I don't know.
Right. So, one of the things that, one of our intents is to do two things at open house night because that's a great example, um, is to, prior to open house night, um, is to do two parent trainings. One on the portal for parents whose students are of age that, um, they're enrolled in the portal and then also webpage, so that we can go over the webpage, the new, um, features of the webpage and where to access information. So that's coming, um, so we hope that parents attend. Um, one of the things that you'll notice, um, is that on the calendar, um, the schools, uh, will each have a color. Um, I don't know why it's not showing up here, it could just be because of the projection, but-
That's the one that I've been putting there.
Oh, okay.
That's different.
So when the-
That's the district giving.
So this is, so the schools all have a color and that will be color coordinated to the calendar. So we're hoping that the calendar feature actually becomes much more useful in not only planning our events, but as families try to navigate all of the events that are going on in the district as well. Uh, one of the things we did here that I didn't put in the entry plan was we do, because we're so small and because kids are involved in so many things, there's a lot of conflicts with kids and they feel bad because they have to miss things. And coaches or drama teachers, there's some competing influences there. And that's the last thing we want is for a student to go home and feel bad because they had to pick between two very important things that they were involved in. So us doing a better administrative job of planning and, and setting expectations that, yes, you should be able to do, you know, one school event for another school event, you know, without there being any ramifications, like setting those sort of expectations for all of our staff, I think is gonna be important and can mitigate some of those feelings that our kids run into, which isn't, which isn't good.
Awesome.
So...
All right, thank you. Any questions on the website?
Oops, it's on cherubs.
I think, this, I think this is, uh, all we have for-
All the lights are off, so it's good night.
Yes.
That's right. Thank you.
So this, uh, concludes our open session. Uh, we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Watch, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we roll call, please?
Maureen McCourt, aye.
Emery Avran, aye.
Yeah, Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you and have a good night.